All right. Good evening, everyone. The time is now six oh one. And I would like to welcome everybody to the regular City of Galt Council meeting for Tuesday, March the second. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic emergency, we have to continue to handle our city council meetings much differently. Then we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm going to now ask our city manager, Mr. Heinz, to give a brief explanation to the public.
Thank you, Mayor Farmer. Lorenzo Heinz, city manager. Good evening. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference. In compliance with the state and county stay at home orders. And as allowed by the governor's executive order in dash twenty nine dash twenty. Which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff. Who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments. Via email at pubcom at city of galt dot org prior to the council meeting today. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the council meeting. By the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item, subject to the customary five minute time limit. Unless the same individual also appears and requests to speak live during the meeting. We will take live comments first, and then the written comments will be read out loud. We are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should also be able to use the raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak. And should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment. Or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. We request, as we typically do in person, council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address. When they are called on to speak and their line is unmuted, but doing so is not required. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hubert, if you would now call the meeting to order.
Okay, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. Thank you. You would now all please join me in a silent prayer followed by our flag salute. Thank you. If you would like to all, please join me for a flag salute now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tina, if you would now give our replay statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www dot stackmetro cable dot TV. Today's meeting will air Friday, March fifth at nine AM and Saturday, March sixth at nine AM. This meeting can also be viewed on Metro Cable fourteen's YouTube channel.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to our item B, agenda approval additions and or deletions. Do we have anything from council? Okay. We'll now move on to item C, presentations. Ms. Hubert, do we have any presentations this evening?
Not this evening.
All right, thank you. Now move on to item D, public comment. If you would please read our statement.
Under Government Code Section five four nine, five four point three. Members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines. Public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom at city of galt dot org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash US zero two web dot zoom dot US. Forward slash J forward slash eight six zero two zero seven 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 two two four. Web ID eight six zero two zero seven 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 two two four.
Do we have any written public comment?
I have received one written comment from Gary Keisler. My name is Gary Keisler, and I was the site coordinator of the Galt App Program for over twenty years and a longtime Galt resident. I am joined tonight via Zoom by Amy Meyer, the current site coordinator. And Rebecca Brew Baker, our former executive director. Galt Act is a program for adults with disabilities. We serve approximately forty adults from the Galt area. Our program is located in the Galt Shopping Center at ten sixty seven C Street. Our clients normally attend program Monday through Friday for nine AM to about two thirty PM. I want to express some current concerns that we have. With the condition at the shopping center and specifically around our program site where we serve a vulnerable population. Several times a week, when our staff arrives in the morning, there is feces and or urine. Behind the building in the bushes or on the sidewalk. We have also found feces on other areas of the shopping center, often left for weeks until a call is made to the property owner. We have also found trash, clothes, and other personal belongings that seem to have been left by the homeless. One of our clients found a hypodermic needle as well. From the burnt marks on the side of the building, it appears as people are cooking over an open flame. The dumpster has also been an ongoing issue with people illegally dumping garbage in and around the dumpster. People also go through the dumpster leaving scattered garbage all around the area. We have had two catalytic catalytic converters stolen off our program vans. One was even stolen after a protective cage was installed to deed or theft. We have had gas siphoned from vehicles in the middle of the day as well. We've installed locking gas caps which seems to have solved the issue. All in all, this has cost our company over four thousand dollars. Our goal is to create a clean and safe environment for the clients we serve. We would like to be able to safely access the area behind our building as well. Due to the current conditions, we do not feel it is safe for clients or staff to be in this area. We have been working with Randy for the code compliance officer to try and correct some of these issues. She has been in contact with the property owner regarding these issues, but had has had limited success. The area behind our buildings seems to be a chronic problem area and has been for the twenty years I was there. Along with further attention from the property owner, I feel a regular police presence in the area would help keep this area safe and clean for everyone. I think a police presence, especially after hours, would be very beneficial. Specifically, if an officer would walk the area behind our building once or twice a night to check the area, I feel. Would do a great deal to alleviate these issues. If you would like to contact me, I can be reached at nine one six six eight five seven six six six. Or by cell nine one six eight seven zero eight one five six. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, may I briefly address that?
You may, please.
I've been, I actually went to that shopping mall and contacted every business owner I could to gather data and what that gentleman stated is a common theme. Some of the business owners do not want to complain due to, if I complain, I get my rent raised. So I've had some struggles in that area. I've been working on it for a couple of weeks. Just that's enough, I guess, for right now, but you know, we're trying to work on it. Okay, thank you for that that information. Do we have any other written comments, Tina?
We do not.
Do we have any hands raised, Rose?
We do. We have Annette on the line.
Please go ahead.
Annette, I have needed your line. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Annette Kuntzey, and I'm a resident of Galt, and I just am here tonight to express gratitude. To Mayor Farmer, a couple of weeks ago, a group of parents. Who have been very desperately trying to work through this struggle and educational crisis in our community. Held a rally, and none of us are rally individuals by nature, but that's sort of at the point where we are and. So just wanted to come tonight to express gratitude because I think that was one of the first times that we truly felt heard. In in our comments and our in our concerns, so I wanted to say thank you, and so we will probably be back and we will probably continue to have events and. And have our voices tried to be heard, but tonight I'm just here to express gratitude and also. To the Galt Police Department because they were very, very welcoming and allowing us to have that event and making us feel comfortable. That it was an okay thing to do, you know, as long as we follow the guidelines and everything. So again, just here to say thank you and. Hopefully, we will continue to have those voices of support in our community as we continue through this, hopefully to a very, very quick and. Quick and ideal resolution for all of the children in our community and for our. Community and city as a whole. So thank you very much. Have a nice evening and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kuntzey.
Thank you.
Do we have any further hands raised, Rose?
We have no further hands raised.
Okay. Any council comments on any of the public comment? Okay. I just wanted to, then I will just say, thank you to Ms. Kuntzey and thank you to the the superintendent. Karen Shower and also as board president, Tom Silva, who obviously also came out that that day, and I think it was. It was as far more important that they were there than 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 me. But I think it was good that they showed up and there was a good dialogue, so thank you for that comment, Ms. Kuntzey. And regarding the comment about the shopping center. I do know the difficulties that we've had with dealing with sometimes with the property owner there. I would ask maybe if. Mr. Heinz, if maybe we could. You know, try to reach out ourselves to the property owner. This is part of a conversation that you and I have been having about keeping our shopping centers more clean than. You know, than they are and stuff, so.
Right. So we're currently looking into that and we will actually, we're currently investigating. Possible measures that we can take internally and trying to figure out what the limits to those measures can be. And if we need to revise our current code. Then we will bring that issue before council, but we are aware of it and we are doing. Our diligence to be able to address it in the future aggressively.
Thank you. I know none of us want to live in a city that, you know, has this kind of thing going on and and I and I can assure you that are from that are watching from the public that the council. Takes these comments seriously and we will do what we can to address them, so thank you for the comments tonight. If there's no further discussion from council, I will move on to our next item. Item E, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Just Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Authority meeting was canceled in the month of February. But on a February eighteen, I attended the two by two. A meeting with the City of Galt and the CSD. Along with the join with the council member Lozano and city mayor, Mr. Heinz. They just, they said the first meeting, we introduced each other and they also gave us the update on the fire department. That's that's what they originally, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Papino.
Yeah, I attended the Regional Air Quality Management District. And I was generally housekeeping business. However, we did get a presentation on the transportation hub. Out in Del Paso Heights and as a district, all members were going to be taking the field trip out there. Into some of the other locations and kind of look at some of the things they're putting in various areas. In the in the region similar to that. That's about all I had.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg.
I don't have anything at this time.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I have a couple of things to report on. First of all, the SECOG. Board meeting that was held on the eighteenth. We had a lot of discussions. It was our first real board meeting after all the committees met and so we talked about. How the SECOG board is also the Airport Land Use Commission Board of Directors, and so we had a. An issue out at Mather Airport that we had to look at to ensure the safety of the residents and. And that was passed when we look at things like noise and safety and such to determine. Whether or not housing elements are appropriate. So that was one piece. We talked a little bit about housing policy, just as as Mr. Hoffman has brought our housing element to us. Everyone's going through that and 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 I know we rely on SECOG staff quite a bit to to get us through those things and I would. Encourage our our staff to continue to do that. They're a great resource. And bring some examples and and experience that they have from other agencies to help, so. And that. And then just to add on a little bit on the CSD two by two. We've invited the Fire Chief at a near at a meeting in the near future to come and present on the recent numbers of calls for service in the area. For our city and the and the area of Galt. As well as the entire CSD Boundary District. To kind of get a an idea of where we stack up and and what kind of service we're provided and. And I think people would be pretty happy with with the level of service and the and the response times. We also talked about some intergovernment things that could happen between the city and the CSD and and. And I know the staff is going to explore any any options coming up in the future, so that was that was positive. We, each agency was able to reach out and say, hey, we we can offer something for your agency and. And and the upside is, I believe, and I've said this, you know, quite a few times in the last two years, but. There might be an opportunity to do things at a at a lesser price cost for for services than it would. You know, for to work with private entities exclusively, and so I think that just having that conversation about. About doing that is is going to be positive, so. So we'll have some positive outcomes with that, I think. And then lastly, it's not my committee, but I did have the opportunity to attend the Galt Youth Commission meeting last night. And they were. What a lively group, and I did get to use my my question thumbs up little one thing that they gave us. That was pretty cool. But they they talked about a plethora of things and. One of the things that came up that was on the agenda that they spoke about was, which is really exciting is. Their the Galt Teen Center, actually Ms. Kuntzey. Brought to the Youth Commission and an opportunity for the Youth Commission and Galt Teen Center to partner for a scavenger hunt. That was pretty cool. And they talked about doing the scavenger hunt over over several days and. You know, it's it's going to be a chance for our community to get out. Into the public and work with this historical society on on. On the actual hunt, and so I think this is, this will be fun. It'll be good for kids and adults alike. And it'll, you know, our town or our city is really used to being with each other and out and about, and we haven't been able to do that for last year quite a bit, so. This will, this will be cool. And then, you know, just it just kind of general other stuff was. Just kind of general information items about projects that they're working on there. They did talk about a youth mental health. Public service announcement project that they're likely to bring to to the council. Or actually to to the city management for for approval before they put it out, so. They're doing some really cool things and and they did miss you, Ms. Mayor Farmer. I pinch hit for you a little bit, did not do you any justice, but. It was, it was a good time. It was a good time. It was good to see a former council member and former mayor Paige Lamson as well, so. That is all I have and more to come on SECOG. And some of the support that they can give to us for our housing element. I think that's that's coming up in the next couple of weeks, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Lozano, and I do appreciate you making that meeting. I wasn't aware that you were going to attend, so. I was a little bummed that I didn't make it. It's, they're always really good meetings and they talk about. So many important things and I am very interested in the way you mentioned about the the mental health. I guess we call it a PSA of some sort, probably. I think that's 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 a great idea and I hopefully they can move quickly to get it to us and we can give our blessing to that. I think it's a important thing right now. But I am out of town and I wasn't able to attend last night and able to do this tonight as well, so thank you for doing that. And I'm also looking forward to what you mentioned about the Fire Chief with the calls of service and stuff. It's very interesting. I. Was on vacation last week for a few days with a family who is a Galt CSD fireman and. Just having conversations with them and some of their calls and things and some of the stuff recently is just, it's eye opening, so. Always very informative, so thank you for the info. As for myself, I actually, as I stated, missed the Youth Commission meeting. As far as official committees and boards, I haven't had anything since then. I didn't attend both the elementary and high school board meetings via Zoom or I observed them. Which I've been trying to pay a lot of close attention to that with with the return to school is such a hot topic, so I'm just, you know, trying to. You know, be involved in keeping an eye on that. So other than that, I have I have nothing else to report, so. With that, we will move on to our next item, which is our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through two be acted simultaneously unless a separate discussion and or action. Is requested by a council member. Item one is the minutes of our regular meeting from February the sixteenth, two thousand twenty one. And item two is to receive a file warrants for the period ending February the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. I would entertain a motion from someone to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano. Seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Ms. Hubert, can we have a roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Your microphone's off, sir.
Yes.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to our next item, item G, our scheduled matters, notice of public hearing. The subject is the Katerina Estates Project Public Hearing. We will start with a presentation by Mr. Craig Hoffman.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight is a public hearing on the Katerina Estates Project. Tonight, the recommendation before the council is to receive the presentation. Open your public hearing in, I want to make sure everyone's seeing the PowerPoint. Is it okay?
No.
Yes, oh, yeah, open the public hearing, receive comments. After closing the public hearing, adopting your environmental document. Approving the general plan amendment for the project. The rezone for the project and then ultimately the tentative map.
That conclude your presentation?
I think I just froze.
Yeah, I was saying, it looks like you did.
Uh-oh.
Just go ahead and give me just a minute and I will see if I can.
Sorry.
That's okay.
There, maybe I need to stop the sharing. Rose.
Are you, okay. Give me one second.
Okay.
Bear with me.
It keeps kicking me out. And then it's not showing the Zoom meeting in, if I drag your three fingers across the pad, it won't show the meeting, so I have to go search for it.
Rose, and I can try resharing again.
That's okay. Just give me one second here and then I'm going to go ahead and. Share my screen here.
I shouldn't say kick me out of the meeting, but it did. I'm watching all of us and it just, that's just disappeared. Went back to mail.
Okay, so let me go ahead and. Share my screen for you. And you'll just have to let me know when you want me to go to the next slide.
Sure, and Rose, could you slide down to slide three, please? All right, perfect. So previously on February second, the city council held a study session on the project. Discussions about the project included land use compatibility. How the project fit in with our housing element update, walkability, access to downtown and improvements on. A lot of the public frontage improvements that would be needed as well as the intersection of F and Fourth Street. We had discussions about noise impacts from the railroad tracks. Location of sound walls as well as size of proposed houses and compatibility really with the surrounding neighborhood. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission held two previous public hearings, a study session on November twelfth. And then ultimately a public hearing on January fourteenth. The Planning Commission recommended for the the city council approve the project with the necessary entitlements. As well as the conditions of approval. Again, the project was recommended with the general plan amendment, the rezone, and ultimately the map. Tonight's meeting marks the fourth public hearing on this. Project and was an effort to try to provide more public outreach to the surrounding neighbors and make sure that they were participating. Next slide, please. The project site is located south of H Street and west of Joy Drive. This is a vacant property. North of the Galt Cemetery and south of the downtown area, and you see the Union Pacific Railroad tracks as well. Next slide, please. Again, entitlements or general plan amendment. A rezone in a tentative subdivision map to divide the property into sixty one lots. Next slide, please. The general plan amendment is looking to go from a low density residential zoning designation that is currently. Would be enacted by. Our low density zoning classifications of R one A, R one B, or R one C. And the applicant is proposing to to move this project to a medium density residential in that designation identifies fifty five hundred square foot lots. Staff and the applicant have been working to add more density near the old town core area and get a more of a pedestrian feel. With the project and moving people into that downtown area. Next slide, please. Again, the rezone would take the twelve acre parcel. From the current R one A zoning designation of ten thousand square foot lots to R two with fifty five hundred square foot lots. Next slide, please. The zoning map identifies the location and how this. Fits in with the downtown area. The property has a purple star on it. It is located south of the downtown area. You start to see the downtown having a higher density and to the north more R two and R three properties. This is one of the last remaining properties near the downtown area, so again, it was an. Effort to to put more density. Effort to to put more density close to the downtown and new residents that could walk to the downtown area. Next slide, please. The subdivision map includes fifty five hundred square foot lots. There's sixty one lots as part of this development. And again, all lots are fifty five feet in width. The fifty five foot width lot allows for. A greater focus on a porch or entry feature and kind of moves the focus away from the garage door. The overall general circulation pattern lot layout in utilities were reviewed for conformance with the general plan and zoning code. And to make sure that all standards are met. Next slide, please. This is an example of the the map. Properties do front onto H Street. So you're seeing existing residences north of H Street. Would be looking at the front porches in the front of the houses. That was an important feature. And on Joy Drive, you're seeing the side of houses. So this is not a project that backs up to the existing neighborhood. You're seeing a project that's active with the existing neighborhood there. And modify grid pattern. Next slide, please. Is part of this project. Staff and the applicant wanted to make sure that the planning commission and ultimately the city council knew the type of product you were seeing. Is it's not a requirement, but they did prepare design guidelines that we've included as part of the packet. There. A part of the resolution for the map that includes the map and design guidelines so that in the future. It would give us some guidance as far as what the houses look like, what were important. Including the minimization of garages and making sure that there were front porches. And again, the applicant has agreed to include these as part of the map so that we'll know. As as a future developer would come forward. That there is an expectation on what these houses look like and they're part of the approval tonight. Next slide, please. At the workshop meeting in February, the council asked a number of questions about circulation improvements. And we wanted to point out condition B twenty seven identifies that the projects installing curb gutter and sidewalk along all the. All the project frontage on Joy Drive and H Street. Condition B twenty requires the reconstruction of curb gutter and sidewalk on the north side of H Street. And this also, this condition also requires the improvement of Fourth Street from H Street up to F Street. And then condition B twenty three requires the improvement of the Fourth Street and F Street intersection. To improve pedestrian safety and connectivity with the downtown. So those conditions are included with the project and they are a requirement. And next slide, please. And just to provide a map that's showing where these improvements are taking place. If you look at. The white star that identifies Fourth Street and F Street. That's where intersection improvements would take place that would help access pedestrian access to the downtown. And where you see the darker black line that runs along Fourth Street and then H Street. Enjoy drive along the project boundaries. Those are where you see the 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 frontage improvements. As well as improvements to the north side of of H Street so that. You had brand new curb gutter and sidewalk as well as on Fourth Street. You're seeing that connectivity to the downtown where you see reconstruction with curb gutter and sidewalk in both the east and west side of the road. Next slide, please. Planning Commission recommendation was for approval of the project. And they felt that as an infill development, it made efficient use of existing city land. And it has been conditioned appropriately to ensure that pedestrian and vehicle improvements. Are made to the project area and improve pedestrian connectivity to the downtown area. And that concludes my presentation tonight, as well as we have the applicant here with True Life Company. We have Aiden Barrett and Derek Spalding.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I will go ahead and we're going to open the public comment. Or the public hearing, I'm sorry. And upon completion of that. Public hearing, we will then field questions from council on this matter. So I will now open the public hearing. Tina, do we have anyone, any written comments?
No written comments.
Ms. Roddicker, do we have any hands raised online?
We currently do not have any hands raised.
Okay, if you're watching from the public and you'd like to comment on this matter, the public hearing is open. I will allow just a brief minute. For you to raise your hand if you want to comment before I close this public hearing. There will be no more public comment allowed. On this particular subject, once the public hearing is closed. So again, if you would like to speak on this matter, you just clickly, if you're an observer in the Zoom, you can click, raise your hand. And we will let you speak. If we have no further hands raised, Rose.
I do have actually a. On the panelist. Aiden Barry, go ahead.
Very good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council and staff. Again, my name is Aiden Barry and staff did an excellent job serving up the item free this evening. Since after my comments, the public hearing is most likely going to be closed. I wanted to make sure that I just took a quick second. To go through some of the work that we've done with staff following the work session that we had with the council. Again, I believe staff has done an excellent job in reviewing kind of the process that we followed as well as some of the specifics. And Mr. Mayor and Mr. Sandu, one of the specifics that you all raised at the workshop. Had to do with the offsite improvements and making sure that they were adequately addressed. And just as a brief kind of introduction, if I may, the 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 neat part about the process is you as policymakers have clearly done a good job because in working with staff. And your planning commission, the conditions that are in front of you tonight specifically captured under B twenty and B twenty three. Capture the discussion all that you all kind of had with us during the workshop. So we have done a deep dive into all of the connect the findings and the conditions associated with the project. We think we've hit all of the comments brought up by the planning commission as well as the comments brought up by the council during our workshop. So we're pleased tonight to be here representing a a project that we think is fully baked and ready for action. I am here to answer any questions. I'm joined tonight by my business partner, Derek Spalding, that works with me. Out of our Folsom office as well as our engineer Casey Fieker with T S D Engineering, who has a longstanding relationship with the city of Galt. Again, my personal thanks to each of you. You have an amazing staff. That works to roll up their sleeves and solve the problems as they come up. And we're very pleased to request you all moving this project forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Do we have any additional hands raised, Rose?
We do not have any hands raised.
Okay, well, if we have no additional hands raised and no hands raised from any of the panelists outside of the council. Then I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And now we will allow comments from city council. Should we have any? Start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank you, Mr. Hoffman, bringing that report. He was working hard on that project. I also like to thank you, the developer, Mr. Barry. You know, he bring that project to close to the city. And thank you for his investment and thank you for bringing that project to the city. On this project, I was, that's my opinion is is he bring the project and very much whatever. We ask as a planning commissioner or the city council, he was very much motivated to do all these things. And whatever last meeting we did ask, I believe I it was kind of fulfill our wishes. The only thing I would like to ask Mr. Hartman, you know, the condition B twenty three. Did we? I I know it might be early stage. Did we some kind of any kind of design? How are we gonna? Make the. Condition B twenty three?
Sure. And I think I'll take a first stab at it. And we also have Bill Forrest as well as Mike Selling from Public Works. The condition identifies that the applicant will complete a traffic analysis and look at the warrants on the intersection. And look if they justify a four way traffic stop with stop signs. And if it doesn't. Hit those warrants, it would look to do pedestrian improvements with. Crosswalks as well as the yellow flashing LED signals to make sure that it would create a safe situation for pedestrians. But I want to make sure that the council's aware of. There will be some type of improvement there. That's what the condition requires. So. I don't want anyone to to work under the assumption, nothing's going to happen there if it doesn't hit warrants. That intersection will be improved to make sure it's a safer condition for pedestrians. And I guess I'd turn that over to to Bill or Mike if they'd like to add anything.
Thank you, Craig. All I would like to add is there's nothing particularly designed right now. Just because during the traffic analysis, we'll take a look at sight lines. Improvements already done on the Fourth Street corridor north of F Street. Existing sidewalks in the area sidewalks that are not existing in the side in the area. So. All of that will be factored in. In in the eventual design, but for right now, we do not have anything. To show council.
Thank you, Bill. So that's me. Did you familiar with that place, Bill? What what is your opinion can be something maybe four way stop can work because there there is a very close to that area that might be can affect or not.
Yeah.
I know it's it's not a, you know, it's not a, you know, it's no study yet. Well, I'm just the basic information.
Yeah. It. The traffic counts for F Street and Fourth Street will certainly factor into that the sight lines. Stopping distances of either. An always stop or a flashing yellow beacon and the proximity to the railroad crossing. For example, we wouldn't want cars stopped. Across the crossing and then the arms come down. So don't have anything particular for you right now. But. All that will be looked at and factored in to the analysis.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hoffman, my next, now the question, just in the information, we could have four or five letters, right? From different agency like in water smart, right? I believe can you might we explain that we are very much satisfied they might be not a significant. Effect on the project, right?
Sure. Steph prepared an initial study and mitigated an egg deck for the project. We routed the project to various agencies to get their comments. Those comments were incorporated into the document. So what you have before you tonight is a document that has met the the requirements of the preparation complete with the California Environmental Quality Act. It was routed for a public review. And those are the comments that we received from various agencies. They were incorporated into the document. And what you have before you is a document that. Legally, you can. Approve and know that it's consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act. And those conditions ultimately will be complied by. This project is part of the approval resolution. You have a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And the project needs to comply with those all those mitigation measures as well as the conditions of approval.
Thank you. And lastly, I can say this is a good project. Again, thank you for Mr. Barry bringing that project to the city. And thank you, Mr. Hoffman. And this can be benefit to the city very close to the downtown. And I'm going to support that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mr. Papa now, Councilmember Papino.
Yeah, as I've said before in multiple meetings, I'm very pleased with the plan and bringing the. Slightly higher density closer to the the city center. And thank you to Director Hoffman for my time on the planning commission and on the council. I appreciate the way that you slowed the pace a little bit and given time both for us to. Kind of understand it and additional time for public comment. And as evidenced by the lack of that tonight, I think that everybody had their chance to have their voice heard. So I appreciate your timing and. It looks like a very thorough answering of the questions that were brought up regarding the foot traffic safety. So. I just appreciate it and I don't have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg. Thank you, Mayor. Some questions, some curiosities. The staff report certainly had like all the information you could hope to find in it. Next to lot sixty one, there's a twelve and three quarter foot pedestrian walkway, which I'm afraid afraid I'm afraid of. In favor of because it's, you know, it has access to a little park area, but is there any concerns or? During I have like a safety concern if there's going to be a a wall and a fence, you know, in a twelve foot section. So there's like an alley there that's somewhat hidden. There I didn't notice lighting there, but I'm just curious if that's anybody's asked about it or it's been addressed or thought of. And then I noticed that the roads are forty eight foot wide. Did I read that correctly? I had to go back actually to last, the last council meeting. Map because I couldn't read this one as well, but I was just curious because I measured mine and they're thirty five feet, which I think I have wide streets and this is another thirteen feet wider.
In here, let me try to. Councilmember, can we answer your questions as you go?
Absolutely.
Okay. What are the things you see on this right away? The right away does include the sidewalks as well. So what you may have measured was actually the the pavement. But as part of the right away, we do have the curb gutter and sidewalk in there. So that would be the additional thirteen feet that you were measuring. So. It would be a similar road to what you have.
I thought I'd double check that. You're probably right.
Okay, okay. And then what you're identifying is that twelve and a half foot. Area build that's lot C. It would be next to the masonry wall.
Yeah. West corner.
Yeah, that is a maintenance access point for the basin. That's along the Boundary South project. So that is to allow not only drainage. The the subdivision drainage in its pipe will go within that easement, but it will also provide access. For city forces to access the basin and do maintenance. And there'll be additional access off of Joy Drive. Along the east boundary, but the main reason why it's there is that the project storm drainage is going through. That alley, for lack of a better term.
Sure, for future maintenance, that makes a lot of sense.
So what you're probably seeing there, Councilmember Vandenberg, is. If the applicant, well, if the ultimate property owner on on sixty one does put a fence along that edge. You would see some type of gate along what would be the southern. Portion of that twenty one or twelve and a half foot easement. And then you'd also have. A gate. Up along what would be J Street. Okay, but I don't. That's a design feature that we'll work on. It is an easement. There is the potential that you wouldn't see a. There is the potential that you wouldn't see a a fence there, you know, it could be open, it doesn't have to be that way. But as far as a design, when we start working on improvement plans, it will be secure. It's not going to be an area that no one has eyes on that would create a nuisance situation. It will be secure.
Excellent. And I I wouldn't want to, I I've worked in construction, so I understand, you know, uh, the flow of things is important for construction and I I don't want curious the if improvements to important streets like Fourth and F, if those are done, the changes are done as early as possible to give the public time to adjust to the new scenario instead of having them happen right before a lot of people move in and there's, you know, an increased traffic and an increased hazard, just a curiosity, really.
I believe that the improvement plans that you're going to see for this project is going to be a comprehensive set that the offsites and the onsites are going to be done together. Because we do need to make sure that those improvements are in place prior to house construction.
Okay, then the last question, you know, on the the B twenty, like through B twenty-four, it doesn't show doesn't show Public Works or Community Development Director next to any of those items. I was just curious why that is. Like a responsible party, so to speak, not that someone wouldn't take.
It's Public Works. It was it was a miss, but those are all Public Works conditions. All the, all the B conditions are all Public Works and they're required to to take care of those.
Great.
I think we had a renumbering of the conditions and they just didn't get the the Public Works mark on those.
Fabulous. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Most uh, most of my comments were already spoken for by my colleagues. Um, I do want to just point out that I appreciate the aggressive off-site improvements um, that have been taken care of. Um, we're going to get curbing gutter well off the site property um, that we wouldn't normally, but I think it's going to be important uh, related to the flow of pedestrians and and traffic in that area, so appreciate that, appreciate staff's work on that. Um, and I want to thank Mr. Barry for bringing this project uh, to 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 us in 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 a wonderful infill development project that that I think is going to be very uh, very good for the community there and hopefully will increase some uh, walkability and business opportunities for for downtown areas, so. I I I again, I just want to echo that I appreciate the uh, several opportunities to actually see it. I did see this presentation at Planning Commission, plus we had our workshop, and so um, I thank you all um, for working on addressing the questions that we had along the way, so. Um, I I I too, uh, as Vice Mayor Sandu said, I I I am in support of the project and and appreciate all the work that's gone in, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. So, I I I agree with most of my fellow council members that I I believe this is a really good project. I I think um, we've all been pretty clear, um, those of us that have been here quite a while, um, Councilmember Lozano and Vice Mayor Sandu about um, our encouragement for infill development. I personally, um, it's no secret that I'm I'm not a big fan of of rapid growth. Um, I believe, and I've said it many times, that uh, the growth in the city of Galt will and always probably will continue to be the most uh, sensitive subject. It's a very fine line that we walk with keeping enough growth to, you know, not to become stagnant, but also um, not, you know, change dramatically, um, you know, this the city's landscape and and its identity, and these infill projects are really uh, help us do that. And I've, I think our votes, my votes and many of us, our votes have have reflected that um, be in favor of the infill. If we have to grow infill is is where I like to see it, small projects, small infill projects, which we've approved many lately. And I feel like those are important and I feel like that's a compromise that we're made. See that. Thank you, Mr. Barry, for bringing the project to us um, and making investment in our community and and I and of course, a big thanks to uh, our director Craig Hoffman. As everybody's mentioned, his whole approach to this has been um, probably just a breath of fresh air, as everybody can agree, is his slow approach with the workshops and the way it's kind of presented, then we kind of have just a real, you know, um, no pressure discussion about the project. And then it, you know, then we have a chance for community input. And I like the, I like it. I don't like things being forced upon us. I don't think any council member likes that, and it feels that way a lot of the time in the past. So I I just want to commend you again on another, uh, well, well-done process, Craig, on this. So Craig, and you and I did speak yesterday, I I I brought up some concerns in a conversation we had yesterday. They're just basically an echo of the concerns that I had before, which have been mentioned by most of the council members tonight. And that is specifically those improvements at F Street. Um, I actually frequent F Street a lot. I drive on that street almost every single day. I come from my house off of Lincoln onto F and then onto Fourth, and I go home that same way. I'm very, very, very familiar with the stop sign there. And um, I believe it is probably one of the most dangerous intersections in the west side of Galt, if not the most dangerous. It regardless of this project, it's something that, I mean, people are going forty-five and plus both directions. They come over the tracks, uh, practically getting airborne sometimes, I mean, it's crazy. And then you have people coming in and out of the gas station and and if you are turning off of Fourth Street, if you're heading south on Fourth and you're trying to turn left and go um, uh, east onto F, you can't even see traffic coming. And if there's a car parked there, you have to pull a little out in the street to see it. And I know that you are aware, we have had pedestrian fatalities um, at that intersection, and we have had um, accidents there as well. I think one was just this last year, um, which I um, remember getting on some of our surveillance footage uh, on our building, which is down on Fourth and E. Um, and so i- it's a dangerous intersection and the thought of, uh, you know, introducing a whole bunch of more traffic, which clearly you're going to have people leaving that neighborhood, going to quick stop to get fuel. I I that's going to be a huge, huge uh, boost in business for them. And then, you know, the whole idea of this, this project really was to put people in close proximity to the downtown, so they could walk down to you know, Velvet Grill or De Brewster's or any other shops and restaurants down through there and 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 do that on foot. The nearest crosswalk is at Fifth, and I'm telling you that people will never go use that crosswalk. They're always going to just jaywalk at at F and and Fourth. And so I know that the condition in here, which I was very happy, I think all of us were very happy to see that, talks about um, the requirement to do, you know, at minimum, a a crossing uh, with the appropriate lighting and flashing and all that. But I do think that um, that we're, I I'm I'm concerned that we're going to create, you know, uh, a crossing in in that appropriate spot, which I feel like it should be there, but now we're closer to the tracks. And then we're, where it's going to be harder for people to stop. I I don't know what the answer is for that intersection. But what I really would like to see, and my fear is, and this is no disrespect to the knowledgeable staff we have in in our Public Works Department, uh, Mr. Forrest and Mr. Clarkson. Uh, you, you know, you all have, we, you, I and you, you two, and we went round and round in the past, uh, even frozen council on traffic studies and 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 things, and and I know my 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 concern really is that that I know the traffic studies do not always equate and always address the public's concerns for safety. They just, there's certain formulas and 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 variables that you guys use and, you know, checkmarks that you have to do. And and I know that what what I feel, what I just sense happening is we do a traffic study in this intersection, and it's like, oh, you know, too close to the tracks, too close to this. We can't do anything, we're just going to crosswalk in and that's the end of it. I I I really feel like we need something to control that intersection, and I do not want this whole thing to hinge on just a traffic study coming back. What I would like to hear is that the the council is able to hear whatever traffic study is made, have a discussion amongst the council and still have the liberty to give direction at at the discretion of the entire council, of course, um, on what we would like to do, whether it fully meshes with that traffic study, or maybe we could do some kind of compromise on that. But I'm looking to see my other, my other council members would would kind of jump on this right now. I know it's important that we, you know, we we do the analysis and all of that, but I I just, I'm so fearful that we're going to just do that traffic study, it's going to just be, no, you know, doesn't warrant anything. So here we go with the crosswalk, and then somebody's going to get killed walking right there, and then we're going to come back and have this discussion about what we need to do to make it safer, and I do not want to be reactive, I want to be proactive. So, i- is that something, I mean, did any of my other council members have an opinion on that?
I would definitely support a proactive approach.
I appreciate that, Mr. Vandenberg. Um, and again, I'm not, I'm not saying to blatantly defy a a study. I'm just, I just feel like in the past, the studies have been the end-all be-all to to these, to these things, and I don't feel like in this situation, I want to see it be that. Um, I don't know, Mr. Selling, would you like to pipe in on this subject a little bit?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so as far as studies go, yeah, there, I mean, there is obviously a great deal of weight put on them, and I guess maybe just a a little one-on-one, so to speak, on intersection control. There are established criteria, warrants, they call them, uh, for placing stop signs, for placing yield signs, for placing signals and the like. Anytime you're doing any kind of control at an intersection, and there are various warrants, whether it's for pedestrians or for delays or for accidents. Uh, you know, things of various natures, uh, and that's what we look at. And as Mr. Forrest noted, you know, we look at sightlines and and other things like the uh, the driveways for the uh, the mini mart there and gas station. The proximity of the railroad crossing, uh, so there's a certain amount of in what we call engineering judgment that's included too. So it's not just, does it tick the box on the warrant or not? Uh, it's not quite that clear-cut. There is some engineering judgment that's, you know, that's applied as well. So, but the thing that you don't want to do is, well, really, there's two things when it comes to looking at these things. One is, you know, you want to be consistent, basically, uh, for legality's sake. Um, you know, because if you're just going to put, you know, stop signs or whatnot at at a certain location where, you know, you feel it might be warranted or it might improve safety, but you don't have any data really to back that up. Then, you know, we basically open the city up to potential liability if something does happen out there. So consistency is is definitely a key thing. And then the other thing in in alluding to the, you know, potential for traffic backing up onto the tracks is you don't want to, you know, solve one problem and create another, so to speak, so. So, but anyway, that's, that's why it's important. It's, it's not just a numbers game, so to speak, with the warrants. It is a, you know, a fairly holistic approach, and there is engineering judgment applied, so. So anyway, that's definitely hear you loud and clear. I did ask the chief to to look into the accident data, and I think maybe the one that you're referring to, at least as his records indicated, was back in January of eighteen, uh, there was a a T-bone basically accident, accident, right angle accident. Uh, then where there was uh, no injuries, fortunately, but uh, but anyway, uh, that's the one that we have. And the other thing about accidents even is, we have to go by what's reported, so there may be fender benders that happen on occasion. If they aren't reported, then, you know, we aren't aware of them necessarily, so you may see accidents out there that don't get reported. And unfortunately, um, you know, without being aware of such things and and having data on it, um, you know, it it kind of ties your hands a bit, so. And and the last thing I guess I'll say on that too is, they have to be accidents of a correctable nature, so things like um, DUIs would not be, you know, considered, so. Anyway, that's just kind of wanted to give kind of a one-on-one on on, you know, what what goes into this analysis, so.
Well, thank you.
And your farmer?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, one of the things I I I want to just highlight, um, one of the areas that Director Selling mentioned, and that's consistency. And there are, there are specific reasons why these studies and these warrants are necessary, and I think Director Selling did a great job of explaining those things. Now, what what makes this system work is that before we go out and do control on these intersections, there is adequate data to support it. It's logical, it's factual, it is informed by engineering judgment, as Director Selling has mentioned. Having someone overrule that judgment and just say, you know, even though there's no data to support it, we'd like to see something there. You're pretty much opening up Pandora's Box, and um, and so any request for any traffic control on any intersection that you get, um, you know, you you might get a lot of requests, and so what we do is make sure that any request for traffic, traffic control on an intersection meets certain standards before we act. And again, as Mike mentioned, or Director Selling mentioned, those standards are informed by engineering judgment. And so I just wanted to make sure that was said.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I and I, believe me, I I understand everything you guys are saying, and I I know the tracks is going to be, that's my concern, is the proximity of the tracks. I just, you know, I know as as Mr. Forrest and even Mr. Clarkson, if he's listening, uh, you know, when back when I was before I was on council and I was on the Public Safety Committee, you know, I I pushed really hard for some kind of, you know, some kind of controls on on Fourth Street and specifically crosswalk markings. Uh, that ended up just finally going to the council and and the end of it was, well, we can't put crosswalk signs, you know, highlighting the crosswalks, because those aren't crosswalks, they're crossing areas. They just pavers. But I can tell you, that's what people use them for, and to me, for lack of a better word, that was like, I I mean, I thought that was the lamest excuse I had ever heard, uh, to put it frankly, I I felt like it was a, it was a, it was something to say, well, we're just making an excuse why we can't make a crosswalk safer that that uh, that a lot of people use. So what I just want to see is, I just want to make sure that we all keep in mind um, that we have a duty to keep our our citizens safe. I'm looking forward to seeing the traffic numbers on that street, because just so you know, there's no speed limit signs on the entire length of F Street, either direction, just so you know that. And I know that there's an understood thing that I've heard many times from um, Public Works staff that, well, it's an understood thing that if the speed limit's not posted, that it's twenty-five, and although you might think that everybody knows that, they don't, and they sure in the heck don't obey it. So, whatever we have to do, whether it's, uh, you know, better pedestrian crossing there, maybe in conjunction with some, some really strict, you know, traffic enforcement, uh, with PD or or whatever, but I'm telling you, uh, the street is wide east, or I'm sorry, west of the tracks, and people are speeding fast coming to tracks. And when they come over those tracks by quick stop, and I'm telling you, this is an intersection that I go through every single day, I can tell you it's dangerous. So I just wanted, you know, everybody to be to be on notice that that I will be pushing hard for something to be done safely there. Um, uh, and I'm hopefully I'll get to support the rest of the council, and I get that it has to, has to be consistent in all the things that everybody mentioned, I understand that, and so, um, but hopefully we can find a good compromise on that. So with that, and that's really my, you know, my main thing with this project, other than that, I I'm very excited about it. I think it's going to be a good fit for the community, so I don't know if if anybody else, uh, any other council members want to have a second comment?
Just a quick comment, I I understand what you you came from, I also understand the view of the staff, you know, we do not want to put any precedent, so all the city everybody can say, but I really understand if we see the problem there. As elected official, as a staff, we really need to review that place. And we really need to review and see, make a good judgment, I do understand the traffic study. But I believe as as elected official or as a director, head of the department, they have also a lot of way to make a good judgment call. Before something happened to be preventable, but if something, uh, you know, one is some kind of review with the department, I'm I'm about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Does anybody else have any comments?
So just, in light of the discussion, just to clarify my understanding, uh, condition B twenty-three, we do an analysis to see if there's a stop sign. If it's warranted, it goes in. If it's not, then we get a pedestrian crossing with activated LED yellow flashers. That's an either or thing, and the crossing with yellow flashing lights is the minimal, am I correct?
Mr. Hoffman?
I mean, that that's the way the the condition currently stands. I don't know if there's something in between that. I think until we do the analysis, and again, that that analysis is comprehensive. We're looking at Fourth Street, we're looking at F Street, and it takes in to account, you know, speeding, if there's speeding going on, but it is a comprehensive analysis. And I guess I'd turn it over to Mike if there's an in-between.
Yeah, and I would say there is a potential for an in-between, uh, you know, as noted, and Mayor Farmer, you know, touched on the speed limit, the primal fatigue thing, uh, if, you know, there's some signage or a flasher or something, that could be an in-between, uh, you know, improvement that could be made, so. In addition to the, the pedestrian flasher.
So. Go ahead, Mr. Papino, sorry.
No, thank you, I just wanted to be clear that the, the minimum we'd be doing is option two under B twenty-three with the crossing with the LED flashers. And if that's the case, I'm, I'm satisfied with that as a minimum, and glad to hear that there may be some other options in between. Thank you.
So I would like to just get further clarification on what Mr. Papino said. Are we talking about the minimum is going to be pedestrian crossing with the LED flashing lights? But, but possibly somewhere from there up into either something in the middle, or, you know, if studies and, and council warrants, whatever, intersection, but the minimum is going to be the pedestrian crossing as described? Is that, is that what I'm, is I'm hearing, Mr. Selling?
That's correct, yes, yes, the analysis may make recommendations of something in between, it may, you know, obviously come back with a full, always stop control warranted, but, you know, until we have it, we can only speculate at this point.
All right, I, I appreciate that. And, and thank you for your comments, Mr. Papino, I, I agree that that's, pedestrian safety is, is the first and foremost, and I think that that would be a huge asset to that, to the intersection, so. Unless we have any comments from other council that didn't speak up a second time, I will entertain a motion to adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendment of twelve point four acres of LDR to MDR, introduced by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance amending the district zoning map of the city of Galt to rezone twelve point four acres of the Catarina Estate project from R one A to R two. And last, adopt a resolution approving the tentative subdivision map subdiv- map subdividing the twelve point four acres into sixty-one single-family lots for the Cataria, Catarina Estates project. Mr. Hoffman?
Oh, yes, a- and if I could, also, making sure that the council is adopting a resolution approving the initial study, the mitigated negative declaration in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Catarina Estates project.
Yeah, I apologize, did I miss that? Sorry.
So, yeah, that is item three on your list of ac- actions, so the first one was to receive the presentation, the second one was
All right, it was first, I'm
Third one included, the, is a resolution adopting the mitigated neg- deck and the mitigation monitoring plan. And then proceeding on to the other ones. It was my understanding that your policy is generally to do them one by one, but if you want to do them all together, you could do that.
Okay. Would anybody, would any council members have an objection to doing them all in one vote? If it's legal to do so, it is legal to do that, Steiner, uh, here, Steiner?
Yeah, it is, it just, sometimes you forget one, and that's why we generally recommend that you do them one at a time.
What would staff feel, Craig, what would you feel most comfortable with?
There, there are four different actions, there are four different
Then we'll do, we'll do four different, then, we'll do it that way, just to be sure. So, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the initial study mitigation, negative declaration, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Catarina Estates project. Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu, Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Next, I'm looking for a motion to adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendment of twelve point four acres from LDR to MDR. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Moved by Councilmember Papino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lozano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Next, I'm looking for a motion to introduce by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance amending the district zoning map of the city of Galt to rezone twelve point four acres of the Catarina Estate project from R one A to R two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. And last, looking for a motion to adopt a resolution approving the tentative subdivision map subdividing the twelve point four acres, twelve point four acre site into sixty-one single-family lots for the Cataria Estates project, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Papino, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Berry, thank you, Mr. Hoffman, thank you, Public Works, for answering all our questions on this matter, thank you.
Thank you all, the CD.
All right, moving on to our, item H, our regular calendar, first item is going to be from our city manager's office. Subject is the coronavirus COVID nineteen update, Mr. Heinz.
All right, can everyone see the, the PowerPoint on the screen?
Yes, sir.
All righty, very good. So, it is March second, twenty twenty-one, we have been in this pandemic for almost a year. And in some cases, I believe it has been a year, I think the first case was about a year ago, and so it's, it's, it's been a, it's been a difficult year, but we've gotten through it. The cases in Sacramento County are up three percent. The deaths in Sacramento County are up seven percent. And so we are measuring these, these metrics from our prior council meeting. The cases in Galt are up two percent, and are, the number of folks that we've lost are up eleven percent. And so while the numbers, the, the growth seems to be slowing, it continues upward. Sacramento County remains in the purple tier. We're at twelve new COVID nineteen cases per day, per thousand, per hundred thousand population. Our goal is to be less than seven daily cases, and so we're at twelve. We're shooting for seven, and seven will get us, less than seven, seven or less will get us to the red tier. We are, however, down from eighteen point seven cases per day from our prior council meeting, so things are getting better. Our positivity rate, however, is only four point seven percent. And so in order to get to the red tier, the positivity rate is less than eight, or less than, less than eight percent. And so while we can't get to the red tier until our, our cases per day goes down to, below seven, our positivity rate is already there. The rate has actually gone down from our prior council meeting from six percent. Greater Sacramento region ICU capacity is currently at twenty-three point five percent, and that's actually up from twenty-two point four percent. So the numbers are starting to tamp down a bit, but the numbers still continue to grow. Last week, we had a drive-through vaccination clinic held at Liberty Ranch High School. And we, it was a collaboration between the Consumers Fire Department, Galt Joint Union High School District, and the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District. They were able to vaccinate twelve hundred educators, law enforcement, and other qualified individuals. I would like to mention that city staff was available and did assist the Consumers Fire Department and the two school districts in making sure that this vaccination clinic went off without a hitch. So the dedicated drive-through vaccination clinics are now available for folks who are sixty-five and older. And Vaccinate Sacramento webpage contains the most up-to-date vaccine information, and again, that's the Sacramento County Vaccinate Sacramento. And so this is more information from Sacramento County, this is an updated version of Sacramento County's vaccine distribution phase flyer. And as you can see, all the groups with the red checkmarks are now eligible for vaccination. They are moving through phase one B now, and one B tier one, and so they'll just keep moving through the tiers until they get to the end of phase one C. The county now continues to vaccinate those folks, as I mentioned, in one B, and that's individuals sixty-five and older, law enforcement and emergency services workers, childcare, and educational workers. The food and agricultural folks will follow along with those folks in phase one B tier two. The Sacramento County Housing and Rede- Redevelopment Agency is now accepting applications for the Sacramento Emergency Rental Assistance Program. So there's over a hundred million in financial assistance available for residents in Sacramento impacted by COVID nineteen. Funds to be used for rental assistance and utilities owed for, from April first, twenty twenty, through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. The application period closes on March nineteenth. Staff will continue to communicate the program to residents through social media, the city's website, and other avenues. Program details are available on the front page of our website, city website, under news, or at www.shra.org backslash Sierra. Last week, myself and the rest of the executive team attended a virtual summit given by the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. And it's called the Building Blocks Virtual Summit. And so the highlight of that, three days of training, was a Zoom meeting with Dr. Fauci. Dr. Anthony Fauci. And I have to tell you, it was a thrill to see him in a Zoom meeting that I was actually part of, as opposed to being on the news. So we, he had a lot of comments about the virus, he spoke about the impact of the virus, and reiterated that this was the worst pandemic since nineteen eighteen. He went over the types of COVID tests that are available. He also emphasized the importance of contact tracing. He also indicated lessons learned from the HIV epidemic, and that the biggest lesson learned is, don't underestimate the impact of a pandemic. And he mentioned there are successes with Operation Warp Speed, includes, including the increasing vaccine availability. We've got the Johnson and Johnson product now out, and so there's three products out there. He talked about the variants, and the one variant that he is the most concerned about is the South African variant. He also expressed some concern about the inconsistency of this virus, and that it can be benign in some individuals, and that, and, and yet be fatal in other individuals. And there's no rhyme or reason for it, or they haven't found the reason for it. He is confident that we will get through this pandemic. And his advice is, let's get as many people vaccinated, and continue to follow the public health measures that are in place with wearing masks and washing our hands. That was, that was the highlight of the conference for me, and it was great hearing it directly from him. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Before we hear a council comment, do we have any public comment, any written comment, Ms. Hubert? Your microphone's off.
No, no, sorry, no public comment.
Okay, Ms. Rodiger, do we have any hands raised online?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with council comments, does any council member have a comment on this matter, just raise your hand and I'll call you out. Nobody, Mr. Councilmember Lozano, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the drive-through vaccination clinic that was held last week. I've talked to many people that were participants in that, and were vaccinated, it was done very well. The instructions for people to, to get there, and what to do when they get there was very well laid out, and, 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 and just very well done in a collaborative effort, and so I wanted to, to thank, thank you, Mr. Heinz and staff for your participation, and also thank the, the other organizations that helped and, and made it go off without a hitch, so. Did get immediate, almost immediate positive feedback, so job well done.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have a couple of questions. And please, and, and again, this, there could be misinformation, but the drive-through was only, it wasn't just available to Galt citizens, right? I mean, it was available to people outside of Galt, is that correct?
It was available to whomever was on the SAC County's eligible list.
Okay.
And so, given that it was sponsored by the, the, the school district, and teachers are on the eligible list, yes, teachers were there, however, all the slots weren't filled by teachers.
Right, I'm aware, yeah, I'm aware that it was quite a bit of just general public. I did hear a lot of people were disappointed because they basically it filled up, I guess, really fast, and there was a lot of talk about people that were not from Galt specifically, and I get that it was put on my CSD so you could have a grow people, but I felt like, you know, I'm just wondering, based on what I heard, there was a high number of people that were not from Galt that filled it, and so there's some people that reached out to me that were upset because they're like, we had a drive-through in Galt, but yet I wasn't able to get a, be a part of it because it filled up, like, I don't know, the first forty-eight hours or something, I, I don't know the exact, but.
Yeah, so. As, as Dr. Fauci mentioned, the vaccines are coming. There is a high demand for the vaccines. I think, I don't think it's the county's policy that a particular location of a clinic guarantees the priority of folks who are close to that clinic, I think the county's priority is vaccinating as many people as they can, and who are on that list. And so what I would do is encourage folks to stay vigilant, make sure you register at our website, register at the county's website, so when these opportunities arise, we can pounce quickly and get folks in to those slots.
Was this, was this drive-through, I, I mean, I saw it, obviously it was on our city's social media and some other things, I, but it wa- how, how much in advance was it, was it put out there, did we?
We were, we were following the lead of Consumes. And so I believe we put it out there about twenty-four hours ahead of time. Amy, you correct me if I'm wrong, but we were following the directions of the PIO of Consumes. Since they were the main sponsor.
Amy, do you have more information on that?
No, that's correct, so, one of the stipulations by the county was that we were to release it to everybody at the same time, and so as soon as Consumers gave us the okay, was when we posted on Facebook, Instagram, we put it on Nextdoor. It went on our website, and then our E-news distribution immediately. And I actually had given a heads-up to Commission on Aging, so that they were aware that it was coming, just to make sure that the, some of the folks that didn't have access to the computer were able to kind of pay attention to what was happening, so. We did do, you know, what we could in order to try and get as many people within the community. But, again, with the county, it was, we weren't able to play any favorites, it was just open to whoever in the county. And we did not have a huge window of opportunity, I think it was the the next day, I think it started at nine AM, and we had the okay at about three thirty, four o'clock to post that, so that's what we were waiting on. But they had been coordinating with the school district ahead of time, and so I think that they were trying to work with the school district to make sure that they received the information as well for their teachers, so.
I think, I think what I heard from people was that, you know, initially, everybody was, the understanding was it would be for teachers and, and first responders and law enforcement, and then when those slot thing get filled, and it was open to the public. When those slots didn't get filled and it was open to the public and people were like, oh, well, I didn't know it was open to the public or else I would have. Went or something, or I would have tried to get on sooner. And I, and I've had other, other people think that they're actually acting like, you know, they've been waiting. This is what you're all going to do for vaccinated and asking and then, and then this happened and they feel like this is the only times like, oh, we had the one, you know. Drive through vaccination goal, I missed it. So now, you know, I'm out of luck or something. And that's kind of the, the feeling I got from a couple of people and.
We have tried the, the, I check every day on SAC county's website and their vaccination page, they post. New vaccination sites pretty much every day, every other day. And I try to push those out on our social media. The McClellan Park one is strictly for sixty five and older, and that's vaccinations. Their appointments are all week and there was hundreds available. So for sixty five and older, granted, a lot of them aren't willing to drive that far, but you know, there is the. Even last week, there were appointments available at the SAC City Unified School District just past Elk Grove. So. You know, we're doing our best to push the information out and there, there have been appointments available. And so, and I think that's going to become more the norm. You're going to start to see some of these appointments not be filled, but they are trying to get through. The educators right now is a big one for them. They want to get the schools back in session.
Yeah.
So, so Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I, I would just encourage the folks to stay vigilant. Sacramento County is responsible for the entire county and getting everyone vaccinated. And they'll have a clinic in Galt one week and they'll have a clinic in Folsom the next. And they'll have a clinic in Sacramento the next. They're aimed at vaccinating the entire county. And so those opportunities as they arise countywide. We push that out on our website as Amy finds out, I'm sorry, as, as Economic Development Manager Mendez finds out, we push that information out on our website. So the opportunities are there. And so I just ask those folks to just stay vigilant. And yeah, we may not be able to get a clinic in Galt every week. We may be able to pull it off once a month, but just go get the vaccine, even if you have to get your car and go up to Sacramento. Or find a ride to get there, but because they're available. Sometimes after these clinics, they have vaccine left over. And so because folks have either double booked or not showing up for their appointment. So if you feel you need to go, go. And get yourself vaccinated.
And I appreciate that. I, I think, you know, again, I'm specifically talking about the people I'm hearing from. These are not people that have access to go to Sacramento. These are. You know, I, I visited some seniors with one of the commission, members of commission on aging. Months back where, you know, these people didn't leave their house. They like, they have no family in the area and they don't want to leave their home. I mean, they're that. Worried about getting out. And these are the people that keep asking, well, what's the city of Galt going to do? Are they going to, is there any way they're going to help facilitate some like. You know, group that can go around and help vaccinate people that can't leave and so on. And they keep asking. So again, I understand what you're saying about, you know, that the goal is to get everybody in SAC county vaccinated, but to be honest with you. I don't feel it's my responsibility to worry about that county. My responsibility is to worry about the people that live in the city of Galt. And that's the only people I care about right now. So that's why I ask these questions.
And I understand, but it is SAC county who's in control of the vaccines. And that's who we have to work with in order to get the vaccines for our folks. We have lobbied SAC county for the last three months and we finally got a clinic here. And so I'm hoping that we remain on the circuit of clinics that they put on and I'm hoping we can get another one or two down here. And we'll, we will go through the same process that we went through. Again, we gave a heads up to the Commission on Aging. I think we're doing the best we can. I mean, folks need to understand this issue, the distribution of these vaccines is in the hands of Sacramento County. The city does not have a supply of vaccines that we can go and distribute. It is SAC county's responsibility to do this. And so we are working with them as best we can to make sure our folks, that is the citizens of Galt, have access to the, the vaccinations.
Is it, is it theoretical to say that we, we could possibly have another clinic in Galt? And, and if that is possible, would it be possible for us to, or actually appropriate? I don't know. I'm just throwing this out there. If we were to know that such a thing, let's say we were lucky enough to get another one scheduled and we know it's coming. To, to ask people, you know, to, I don't know if it's just a first come, first served or whatever, but prioritize like people over a certain age on the first come, first served basis and, you know, and then. After that age group, then, then go for, you know, open it up to whatever. Is that something we could do?
That, that is something that first of all, we'd have to lobby SAC county to get another clinic down here. And then SAC county will talk with us about the parameters. And, and then we will figure out. And then we will figure out with the county what those parameters are. And, and at some point. Walgreens and some of our local pharmacies will likely start having the vaccine as well. And so we got three products out there. The storm in the Midwest is over. Those products are rolling. They are being shipped right now. They are headed to the states, they're headed to California. And once they get to the California border, they're disseminated by county. But they're also disseminated to the pharmacies. And so, yeah, if we're, we're going to continue to work with SAC county. And we're going to do what we can to get another clinic down here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think too, Mayor Farmer, we, we fielded a lot of phone calls. The day of the vaccination clinic from folks who were frustrated, specifically those who had seen it on the news and weren't able to access it. Many of them don't have computers and don't have internet access. And so I think that the difficulty there is they just want to call somebody to schedule an appointment. And so. I actually shot an email earlier today over to the COVID. Email address that the county has to find out if there's a phone number or something that these people can call to schedule an appointment because. There was probably a dozen calls that we've received since then. With, you know, people just don't have access to the internet and don't see what's being posted. And so I think that's part of the concern. So we'll do our best to try to see how we can facilitate and at least get a phone number out there for people to call to schedule.
Right. Councilmember Lazzano, you got a question?
I, I, I apologize, my, I had some technical difficulties and we kicked off, so I don't know if this has been covered, but. One of the things to consider, or at least a piece of information is it, it is not. All, they don't always know that they're going to have X amount of vaccine come. I've worked a couple of these clinics in my professional life and. You know, if the clinic is scheduled for Friday, they're still wondering if the vaccine is going to land on, on Wednesday. They're still wondering if it's going to get there. So part of the reason why they don't announce a clinic, you know, a week ahead of time. Is because a week ahead of time, they don't even have the vaccine yet. And so to announce a vaccine clinic without vaccine and it doesn't arrive. Then they have to cancel it. And so it causes a lot of confusion. So. I, I don't know that the general public knows that. In fact, we have a clinic that was, was supposed to happen this Friday that the vaccine still hasn't arrived and. And they're in a different area, not, not in Galt, but in a different area. And so it's, it's not going to happen now. So. You know, there, I do know there was some question about, well, why don't you give us enough time to sign up and only release, you know. Fifty spots at a time or, or whatever. So to make it more equitable. Honestly, I think it's going to get real equitable here pretty quick. Once we have an overload of vaccine and we have a lot of people. That are being vaccinated. And so the, the demand drops. I, and I think that's when it's really going to help, but. But I too worry about some of our folks that, that don't have access to technology or don't have an access to vehicles. And, and when I've spoken with the, the city manager about this a few weeks ago and, and even mentioned in a council meeting that. It would be nice if the county put something together where they had a mobile vaccination group. But I'll tell you, having, having actually worked on the front lines on, in these vaccination clinics. It is a lot of work. I mean, you don't just, you know, the refrigeration of vaccine and, you know, there's all these things that go into it and loading them and. You know, not loading, you know, there's supposed to be ten doses per vial, but sometimes you get twelve and it's, there's a lot that goes into it. And so. So hopefully, like, I don't want to take a bunch of time here, but just, just know that the vaccine is not as available as we think. And when it is available, we don't know really when it's going to, when it's going to land. And so like the city manager said, be patient, continue to look. At the websites and, and we'll do our best to get it out to, to as many of our citizens as we can. And I believe that's the county's goal too, like you said, is, is really get everybody done. So. Anyway, I just wanted to point that out because I don't think the general public really knows that that's, that's how it's working.
Well, I appreciate the info. Councilmember Vanderburg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Menendez, for, you know, what you're doing to get the word out. Appreciate it. Sounds like you're, as I was writing things down, you were answering. So that's good to hear. I was curious if the testing is, you know, the number of testing has gone up and if they're. Are they testing just for positive cases or asymptomatic and people that are sick? And certainly the vaccines are, you know, vaccinations are way up. And I was curious when the next update might be.
What, when you say update, you're, are you referring update to testing or update regarding vaccines?
Statistics, because, you know, I'm, I'm hearing an increasing number of support to open schools and a push to open schools. And there's some that want still. Continue our, continue our present path, but it seems to be rising. So, you know, just try to get the information out to those folks.
Right. I, I, I think our next update, well, we'll have an update for you at the, the next council meeting. But the next challenge for Sacramento County is to move from the purple tier to the red tier. We're already there as far as positivity rate. Where we're struggling and not so much struggling, but we're getting there. Is the number of cases per day per hundred thousand. We're at twelve. We need to be less than eight.
But they, they don't, they don't consider how many tests are taken. It's just a raw number, right? Positive is positive.
I believe so.
Okay, then, then one final thing. I believe, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the Johnson and Johnson vaccine just got approved.
Yes.
We're going to be rolling out like tens of millions of vaccines in the next coming weeks. So that really should help everybody.
Yes.
For those people that want the, the big push, I, I understand, you know, you're pushed to open schools and, and I, I understand the hazards that can create for. The mental health of young people as was demonstrated around community quite sadly this week. Yeah, that, that was, that was something else. But it's also, I wouldn't want to see our schools hurt because they got punished for not following the rules and waiting just one or two more weeks.
Right.
And that's all I have. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, I, I mean, I. I, it's just, it is sad that like, if you, I mean, if you can drive, if you have, if you have mobility and you could get from one place or another in a car or, or you could drive, whatever. I mean, you can get vaccinated. I think there's. There's so many different places I've heard about. But sadly, you know, people that the most vulnerable, all these people that Amy mentioned, you know, that don't have internet, they're, they're, they're slow to get information. They're, they're not, you know, they don't drive, they don't have a possibly family to drive them. And they're the ones that, you know, because there's a lot of people that, you know. There's a lot of people that are, that are going to get vaccinated, they're not going to do it. And, but I think overwhelmingly, I think most of the, our seniors who are the most vulnerable. I think the greater percentage of them are opting to get vaccinated because of their high risk. And unfortunately, those are the people that are. The most difficult to get to somewhere to vaccinate. So it's unfortunately like the people that are the most vulnerable to what's going on are the ones that are some most difficult for them to get to. A vaccine site. So I appreciate the information. I just have one last question on stats before I get off the subject. So the daily per, the eight per hundred thousand, is that daily? That's a daily statistic, right, Mr. Hines?
Give me just a second here.
Because if it is, I'm thinking, you know, what, eight per hundred thousand. So basically Galt's twenty six thousand. So that means that day on a daily basis, like one point. Eight or one point seven people, we can only have that many people to fall in the entire community of Galt or else we're going to break that threshold. Like two people would put us over that threshold. I mean, that seems like an unattainable number. I don't even see how we would ever get below that, honestly.
Actually by county. So it's the entire county they look at. It's not by city. And, you know, Placer County met that threshold today. So they were put into the red, they qualified for red, but they. Have to stay there for seven days before they can move to red. So.
Because I, I know that this red tier thing is, I mean, I mean, for those of you that are listening out there, I only pushed the subject because. The red tier really is kind of like the, the bar that's set for schools. And there's a huge movement to get school like Mr. Vanderburg mentioned. Our kids, you know, the arrangement the school districts have with the, the teachers unions and things is all contingent on red tier, red tier, red tier. And, and as long as that, 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 you know, is just right there, but just, just out of grasp. I feel like this is just going to keep dragging on. And so that's why I just. I just wish we could get there as quick as possible so we can get our, start transitioning back into getting our kids back into school. So anyways. It's another subject, but thank you for the information, Mr. Hines. Thank you, Amy, for elaborating on that. And for those of you at home, you've heard this discussion. I, I encourage you to, to be vigilant and try to find every new source you can. If you're looking to get vaccinated and watch all the city's social media pages, Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram. If you're not on those. You know, call City Hall and just call every day if you have to and ask, you know, do you know of anything that's happening, you know, or communicate with the Commission on Aging. That's a good resource and, and hopefully they'll get more involved. So if anybody has any comment yet, Mr. Hines.
I, I just wanted to say that we will continue to ask the questions that the council is asking about reaching those folks who are vulnerable. Who need vaccination, who may not have access to the electronics in, in order to. Secure a reservation. So we will be asking them about, you know, what do we do about this population? Dr. Fauci also mentioned that the, the group of folks that are most susceptible to this. To this virus are folks who are black and brown. And they're having a hard time getting access to that group as well. So, so I wanted to let you all know that we will continue pursuing this question to take care of our folks here in Galt. That may not have the transportation or may not have the electronic connections and pose that question to. The county and see what they, see how they respond.
And can I say something?
Just please, please.
So I advocate for our city every week in our COVID meetings. I have brought up the mobilization of the vaccines. The county's not close to doing that yet, but as soon as they are. On, I'm doing everything we can to get them down here. I'm on a weekly meeting with, with the county regarding COVID. Due to our testing site. So I, I want you to know that we have brought these, some of these concerns to the county and they're working on them. They don't have an answer for us at this point.
All right, good enough. Thank you, sir. Thank you again for all your comments and input. Appreciate that. So without any further comment from anyone, we'll move on to our second item in our regular calendar, which the subject is the City of Galt Comprehensive. Annual Finance Report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty or our CAFR. Our agenda report is going to be presented by Ms. Tyson. So Ms. Tyson, if you will.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and the public. Before you this evening is the Galt Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. For the fiscal year ended June thirtieth to twenty twenty. This report is before you with the various items that are customary and I'll go through those briefly. I wanted to mention that also in your packet is the actual report, which is quite lengthy. And those who are interested in looking at the outcome for this particular year. I would encourage you to take a look at the transmital letter done by the city manager. That report. It gives some background information along with. The economic situation at the time. That we also have a letter from our independent auditors. And then the management discussion and analysis. That is page five through. Twenty, and that describes in a fair amount of detail. Specific instances that created variances, particularly from year over year, but also things that are relevant to this particular fiscal year. I wanted to mention that the results from the audit report are an unmodified. are an unmodified result, which means that these are reliable financial statements. I also want to mention that there are four letters attached electronically. And if you happen to have a hard copy, those four letters are the auditor letter to the mayor and council, which guides you through kind of the process and how that went between the auditors and staff. You also have a letter here that is the what we call the internal control report, which tells how reliable our systems are that provide the assurances to those financial statements. There is one recommendation on that that will probably be mentioned by our auditor, and that is in regards to the bank reconciliations. We still struggle with that a bit. Obviously, this was the year that we had the ransom attack and we had financial systems down for months. It is customary to do your bank reconciliation every month. And so not being able to do that through the means that we normally use caused that finding. Also, the the staffing that you've heard about before is relevant to that. The third letter is the letter that is validating our work around the apportionment limit. That's required element of all these audits for government. The city is well below their their limit and in good standing. And the last letter is your report on AB three seven seven three. This is something we ask our auditors to evaluate and report back every year. That report is a report of compliance to that regulation and our standing, we are in good standing with that. I also wanted to mention that in that MDNA, in the past, council has wanted to see those figures that are relevant to AB three seven seven three. That's on page fifteen of your MDNA. So that's proven presented for your for your evaluation. I did want to mention that normally in this report that you see every year, there is also a single audit, which is relevant to federal grants. Because this particular year, we didn't have as many grants active as in some years. We fell below the threshold for that audit, and so there is no audit for single audit in this packet. Our auditors are with us this evening. Our auditing firm is is LSL. Lance Soul in Longgrin and our auditing partner is Mr. Brandon Young. He's with us this evening. His team assisted us greatly through this process. And he is here to here to present to you at the independent auditor report. After he speaks, our city manager, Mr. Heinz, is going to give you some more detail about the position of the city, the financial net position. And then I am available to answer any questions you may have. With that, Mr. Young, would you like to speak to council directly?
Sure, Mr. Heinz, if you want me to go first, or? I think you're saying yes. Okay, sounds good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brandon Young. As Claire mentioned, I'm a partner with LSL CPAs, which is the external auditing firm of the city. This is our third year working with the city of Galt. And every year has seemed to bring something different. So this year, our our audit, we were trying to play catch up from previous previous years audit, recovering kind of from the cyber attack. And then COVID hit and we did everything remotely. So it's been unorthodox to to say the least, but considering it's it's March second and the the capital was presented last year in June or July. I believe it's progress, and I think we are headed in the right direction to get things back on track timely and to get reports by the end of the year. So our audit for this year actually ended at the beginning in July. Right ever, right after we finished the twenty nineteen CAFER and audit, we basically got got right going on twenty twenty. In July, we did our interim procedures. During interim, what we're doing is we are evaluating the city's processes surrounding financial reporting, how they're processing checks, how they're processing cash receipts, how they're tracking capital assets, how they're tracking grant activity, any long term debt activity, the bank reconciliation process and making sure that there are there there are checks and balances and approvals in place that would detect any errors or any omissions that would be caught by city staff. What we do with that information is we come back to the office in the summer. Not while we are not in the office right now, but we evaluate the information and do a risk assessment, and then we do our year and year and audit procedures. This year, a year and audit, I'd have to double check. I think it was around probably November, October, November is what we ended up doing. During that time is when we are, we are pulling documents or would be pulling documents. This year ended up where the city was scanning a lot of documents, having to provide, do a lot of Zoom meetings like this to share screens. That's when we're looking at checks, looking at invoices, verifying things that transactions are recorded in the proper period, they're recorded in the proper accounts. They are classified correctly. There are proper approvals on the documents. Things of that nature. And we are going through a lot of different selections, a lot of analytical procedures, look focusing on variance analysis from current year, prior year, focusing on budget to actuals to see what what areas maybe there we need to investigate as to why there was large variances. This year, obviously, the last three months of twenty twenty were a little bit unexpected. So the the biggest impact you would see, I would think, you know, swings financially is going to be in twenty twenty one, given that the COVID hit in the last quarter of the year. Fortunately, the city of Galt compared to some other clients is not heavily reliant on on TOT tax, as some of the other clients that I work with are. So the impacts are really varied across across the state right now as as what is being impacted. After the field work is completed, it's usually a about a a six to ten week process in a given year to get the reports wrapped up, finalized, reviewed, and in the form that you see them right now in front of you. So I'm going to go through a couple of the letters and touch on them. Claire touched on them briefly, so I won't elaborate too much, and I can answer any questions after the fact. So the first letter is what you're going to see in the CAFER, which is going to be the opinion letter. It's also referred to as the Independent Auditor's Report. That that's that's part of the CAFER document. So as Claire mentioned, that letter is giving the city an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion that you can receive and the opinion that you want. Anything other than unmodified opinion usually spells trouble, meaning that something came up that we had to disclose, or we weren't able to give an opinion on, or just some of the numbers we basically could not support. No issues with that this year with the city. We have not had that in the three years we worked with them. So there's an unmodified opinion in this in this letter. One thing I will point out in this letter where it talks about the required supplementary information on the second page. It's referring you to, one of the items it's referring you to is the the pension and OPEB liability schedules in the back of the document. What it's saying is that these numbers essentially are tied into the rest of the document. There the actuary reports are reviewed. But these are calculated by third party actuaries. And we evaluate them for completeness and accuracy, that they're disclosed properly, but we aren't the ones calculating these numbers. It's kind of just like a just letting you know that those are are required scheduled under government audits, but they are calculated by third parties. So that's the first letter. The second letter in your packet, I believe, is the Report on Internal Controls, also titled the Independent Auditor's Report. You'll hear it referred to as the Government Auditing Standards Letter, the Yellow Book Letter, Management Letter. It kind of has multiple different names. And this is a letter that if there are issues that come up, whether it be a process we feel needs improvement or an adjustment needed to the document that was substantial, you would see it in this letter as a finding or a correction. So there is one this year pertaining to bank recs. I know you've seen it in the past. It's a little bit, a little bit different this year. In the first year, when there was issues with the bank recs, it was more so the city was just very behind in the process and not getting them timely. They have improved vastly. What we would like to see moving forward is that there are minimal to no reconciling items on these bank recs, meaning everything is in fact reconciled. And then that they they're able to complete them, you know, in a reasonable amount of time after the month ends. Obviously, with with COVID and cyber attack, there has been some more some unexpected situations. I know the city is recruiting for another, or at least they were recruiting for an accounting manager. So I I would like to see this and hopefully see this this fall off in in future years. And I know that Claire and her team are actively working on on doing that. So that's the only thing this year. So it's good to just have one. We're getting the number down. So I'm happy to see that. The last interview, not last interview, I'm sorry, the last letter or last two letters. So the next one I'll touch on is the AB three seven seven three letter. This is the compliance letter pertaining to the Assembly Bill specific to the city of Galt for the flea market. We are engaged to perform a compliance audit where we are sampling transactions specific to the flea market and that fund to ensure that the money is spent for parks and recreation activity in accordance with the Assembly Bill. So what this letter is telling you that based on what we sampled and what we analyzed, that the the transactions we looked at were in accordance with the Assembly Bill for Parks and Rec activity. The sampling was obviously a little different this year as the the flea market, the last quarter of the year, wasn't much going on. So there was less to look at, but of what we sampled, there were no issues that were noted. So based on our our testing, the city was in compliance with the Assembly Bill for fiscal year twenty twenty. The last letter that I will touch on is called the Audit Communication Letter. And so one addressed to, they're all addressed to Mayor members of the council, but this one doesn't have a title on it, just a date and says to the Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council. This is really a summary letter, kind of notifying any issues of the that arose in the audit and kind of summarizing key, different key areas. A couple of things I'll touch on. As I kind of touched on briefly, the paragraph you see on the first page has an end end talking about management estimates. This is referring you again to the OPEB liability and the pension liability, meaning that these numbers are estimated and swing each year back and forth each way for from a variety of factors that the city of the city of Galt really cannot control. It's based on CalPERS rate of return on investment performance. It's based on changes in mortality rate assumptions, expected rates of inflation, expected rates of health insurance, and they they use all these assumptions and they they factor them into what they calculate as the city's unfunded pension and OPEB liability at the end of the year. And like I mentioned before, we evaluate the factors that they are using to come up with the reports. We ensure that they are they are disclosed properly and reflected properly in the CAFER, but they are calculated by third party actuaries. The a word of note as an example, essentially, CalPERS for fiscal year twenty twenty, I believe the rate of return on investment came at about four point seven percent, which considering that when COVID hit, they went negative, four point seven percent is is a really positive turnaround. When I last checked fiscal year twenty twenty one, I believe they're they're pretty high. They were upwards of ten percent. So a swing back and forth is difficult. And the way CalPERS looks at it, they look at it really over a thirty year period. There have been discussions as if they're going to lower the discount rate. Right now, I believe it's at seven percent. There's been discussions that they need to lower it to six point five. If they were to do so, it it increases the liability for every government agency across the state without really any anything that any city can do to control it. There are other mechanisms as far as that our city is taking to fund the pension liabilities, but CalPERS is going to have to get paid either way. So it just, it's got a number that has to disclose. It it doesn't it's accurate to have it in the financials, but it does kind of distort some things, I think, to when it swings back and forth so much. But it's there. It's a huge number, something that needs to be addressed, but we pointed out in this letter. A couple other sections, if there were ever any difficulties we encountered with management, as far as we couldn't come to an agreement on how our transaction should be recorded, if they were not forthcoming with information or wouldn't give us information we were looking for, it would be disclosed here. There's nothing in here that discusses that. We have not had that issue. Claire and her staff have been very forthcoming, even when they are short staffed to get a lot of the documents that we we do request a lot of information. It is very cumbersome and time consuming. And they have been as forthcoming as possible to get us everything that we need to to get through the audit. The last thing I'll have note in this letter with COVID, every year, there are typically new government accounting standards. For those from the private world, there's FASB and GASB, they change accounting standards. COVID delayed everything by a year. So the most impactful one that's coming up for all the agencies really across the state is GASB eighty seven, which is going to need to be implemented in fiscal year twenty twenty two. This is for those with a finance background. In the past, leases have been reported as operating or capital leases. That is in essence going away and being eliminated. And all the leases will be reflected the same way on the financial statements and disclosed accordingly. And you'll see some new line items. And what they're trying to do is show the value of any leased assets from both sides and show any liability outstanding for operating leases that maybe has a very long lease period and disclose the the terms of those accordingly. So it will change a thing on the financial statement. Some agencies only have a couple leases. It's not impactful. But we work with a couple of counties that have an upwards of five hundred. So it it can be incredibly impactful or not that much of a change. So that's the most significant one coming down immediately. They are reviewing changing the structure of governmental accounting and financial reporting altogether, which will be, you know, probably five to ten years from now. But there are constantly trying to make these documents easier to use for public officials because they are getting very long. You know, this is the Galt is is a smaller city and it's still almost two hundred pages. And some of these larger cities are getting upwards of five hundred pages and it's getting a little bit excessive. So they are kind of constantly evaluating ways to to remove information that maybe is not necessary and clarify information that people want to see. So it's it's always in the works. It's just a process and it takes time. So that is the twenty twenty audit overall from the audit perspective. If you have any questions, I can either answer them now or if Mr. Heinz wants me to wait after, I can do that as well.
Why don't, why don't let me do my presentation and then that way council can question all three of us should they desire.
Sounds good.
So but Brandon, thank you so much. Claire, thank you as well. But council members, if you would join me on page two of six and your staff report. And so we're going to talk about the results of the the operations within the CAFER. And what I hope to do here is to not only give you information about the results, but also point to some statements and sections in those statements that you can go to immediately with any CAFER to explain exactly what financial situation or position we're in. And so you, that way you sort of cut right to the heart of the matter within this very large document. And this also starts our conversation about strategy, financial strategy going forward. As far as how do we maximize our revenue streams, drive down expenditures, be able to recognize those expenditures that are looming. And Brandon mentioned CalPERS dropping their discount rate because if they do that, we have no choice. And so all of all of a sudden, our pension liability rises. And so we just have to accommodate it. So let's let's start here on the bottom of page two of six. And so our government wide net position, and I'll just go right to the bullets. Now, on the balance sheet side, and I'm going to take you to these statements, our assets decreased by nine hundred and eighty four thousand. And that was mainly driven by a write off of a a successor agency debt that we heard back in November. And so council approved that write off. And again, they were dollars that we weren't going to receive, and so we needed to reflect those. We need to reflect that appropriately in our balance sheet. On the other side, our liabilities also decreased. That's a good, also a good thing. And it's primarily driven by a reduction in long term debt and 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 offset somewhat by a net increase in OPEB liability. On the, I'll call it the income statement side, although these statements that I'm saying to you have different names in the world of government, but I'm trying to use sort of the private sector nicknames for these these statements. So on the income statement side, total revenues as compared to last year. And by the way, all these metrics are compared to the prior year. And so the total revenues have increased by a million sixteen. And so that's that's actually good news. Total expenditures have increased as well by one point eight million, primarily driven by an increase in the streets and roads expenses and a one point four increase in general government expenditures. It's offset by a one point nine million dollar expenditure decrease in parks and rec. And so during my next six months here in Galt, I'll be looking into all of those ups and downs, and hopefully I'll be able to report out on those in the future. So that's our results government wide. Now, as far as the general fund is concerned, we actually have good news for you in that the general fund balance has has gone up by six hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. That's about a six point eight percent return. And so that's better than any bank can give you right now. So I was pretty pleased to see that that increases there. Our total general fund balance, which we will go through in just a second, is sitting at ten point three million. That ten point three million is stratified, and I'm over on page three of six now. And in the middle of the, in the middle of the page, and so that ten point three one nine million is stratified into a number of categories, five categories. And so we have the non-spendable amount, which is basically prepaid, things that we've already paid for, that cash really isn't available for. Then we have the committed, and the city's rainy day fund is included in that, and we'll go over that in a little bit. We have an amount that's assigned, and so council has assigned a certain dollars for certain functions. And then we have the uncommitted or unassigned fund balance. And that's the first thing I look at when I look at a city. So during my research of Galt prior to the interview with the council back in the summer, that's the first thing I looked at with your last CAFR, to see what that unassigned fund balance looked like and to see whether it was growing. That is always a good indicator to folks outside of the city, how healthy city operations are. And how the city's doing. So now I'm gonna take you into this CAFR itself. And if I'm moving too fast, let me know. I'm gonna take you into the CAFR itself, and we're gonna, our first stop will be page twenty three of the CAFR. And so this is a this is our statement of net position, which is essentially a citywide balance sheet. And so it's a net position for the, the city wides, and so you're gonna see two sets of statements, you're gonna see citywide statements and you're gonna see fund level statements. The citywide statements combine all of the funds that the city operates with. And you see that both from a balance sheet or net, at net position perspective or a income statement or statement of activities perspective. So this first statement here on twenty three is the city's statement of net, net position. This reflects our position as of June thirty twenty twenty. And as you can see, we've got it broken down into governmental activities and business type activities. Now, business type activities are basically the, the, sort of the enterprise areas that we have here in the city, the water sewer and storm and those funds. And, and the governmental funds examples include the general fund, parks and rec fund. And so we delineate those, those two sets of funds in these government wide statements. The big thing that we wanted to point out to you is that the, at the bottom of the government wide activities, you will see down and unrestricted that there's a negative unrestricted there. That negative will appear on most cities, government wide statement of net positions because a few years ago, the government's accounting standards required that we reflect long term pension costs in these, in these documents. And so as a result of us reflecting long term pension costs in these documents, just about every city I know has a negative there. And by the way, those, that net pension liability is in the middle of the page under liabilities. And it's under the section that says due in more than one year. And that's, as Brandon mentioned, that's part of the governmental accounting standards. And so we have to reflect that, and unfortunately, it creates that, that negative and but I wanted you to be aware that it's there and why it's there. So let's move to page twenty four. The next page, and so we've just seen the statement of net position, which is a governmental balance sheet. And now we're gonna see the statement of activities, which is essentially a governmental income statement. And so this is a very weird statement. It's not structured like a normal income statement, you've got expenses over on the left side. You've got program revenues next to it. And then you've got your general revenues at the bottom. But essentially, the number that I want you to focus on is over on page twenty five. And at the bottom of the reading, at the bottom of the schedule where it says that the change in net position is a negative one point eight nine four million. So that means citywide, we've lost net position of about one point nine million. And given that we're talking about two hundred and nine million in assets, it's a small drop. But, but we wanted to make sure you saw that. So as we present CAFRs, you'll be able to go to the various line items and see, alright, how did we do? Did net position go up? Did it go down on a citywide basis? So that's the goal here. The next page. If you would join me over at page, in the CAFR, page thirty two. So now we're gonna look at the fund level statements. And you'll notice that the, the, the statement name has changed. And so it's not the statement of activities, it's now the statement of revenues, expenditures, gen, changes in fund balance. And so this lays out all of the, the, the the, the special revenue funds, the general funds, and kind of lays them bare and, and takes that citywide perspective and just breaks it down into the individual, individual funds. The fund that I key in on the first is general fund. Because I want to see how we're doing, and that's our main operating fund. Now you can see that our revenues, you can see our expenditures. You can see down at the bottom of that general fund column, you'll see that there was a positive change to the net, to the position or the fund balance of the general fund by six hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. And so that's always a good number to find first. When you, when you get your CAFR, how did we do with the general fund? Was there a contribution or was there a reduction to the fund balance? And you will see the resultant fund balance of ten point three one nine million there, and that's a good indicator of how we're doing. The other funds are there as well, we've got the Parks and Recreation Fund, all the way through the Citywide Capital Acquisition and Recovery Fund. The other governmental funds are all lumped together in the column second to the, second from the right. There'll be a breakdown of those funds, they're typically called non-major funds. They'll be broken down later in the CAFR, but we're not gonna go over those tonight, but we can get into those if you'd like. So this is our sort of fund level income statement. I also wanted to take you over to page thirty six. Because this is our business type activities balance sheet, and hang on for just a second, I may have. Okay, before we go there, let's go back to page twenty eight. Because we just saw the we just saw the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance at the fund level. So I wanted to show you on page twenty eight, the balance sheet side of this, of the funds as well. And so you can see the assets, liabilities, deferred inflows of resources and fund balances for the general fund as well. You will notice that the fund balance, again, we're on page twenty eight toward the bottom of the general fund column. You will see that the fund balances are, are stratified in the way that we've laid them out in the staff report. And so it's clear that our unassigned fund balance is five point three four three million. And again, that's a good sign and the fact that we are adding to that balance at the completion of these statements. So that's our balance sheet and that's our income statement on a fun level for the governmental funds. Our next stop is back to page thirty six. And we're gonna look at the balance sheet for our enterprise funds. And again, you see water, sewer, solid waste and storm there, and those operate as basically separate businesses. They carry long term debt, they carry all of the obligations of those businesses in these statements. Whereas the governmental funds only carry so many things, they typically only carry the things that are current, they don't carry long term things. But as far as the proprietary statements, I wanted to show you the results of operations for the business type funds, and if you go over to page thirty seven, toward the bottom of that readout, you can see the changes in net position for water, sewer, solid waste and storm. So there, it's gonna be times when we will be presenting increases in rates before council to approve. And I wanted you to have some context as to one of the reasons why we're increasing those rates. And as you can see, all but one of our enterprise activities are, have a, a negative change to the net position. Now, some of that has to do with the write off that we've just that are also factored into these statements. And so I'll have to figure that out, and actually, if you see, take a look at the line right above the changes in net position. And it says special note, special item, note seventeen. And note seventeen speaks to the write off of the successor agency successor agency debt. So you can see those negatives going across there, and for this year, those negatives are driving our change in net positions into the negative. So it's my hope that once we're done with this year and that special note goes away, the net position, the change in net position for all of these enterprise funds will go positive. And then I wanted to bring your attention to page fifty. And page fifty, note one, lays out the, the different definitions of the different categories that are, that our general fund balance and all of our fund balances are stratified by. And it gives you more, I summarized them in the staff report, but these are sort of the official definitions there. And the last page I wanted to show you was page sixty four. And what page sixty four does is it actually breaks down the different categories of fund balance. And so you can see, I will start with the general fund, you can see the prepaid and the inventories are sitting at a hundred and three or a hundred and four thousand dollars, which makes up the most of that, that dollar amount. If we move down to committed to, we've got an economic stability set aside. And this number actually went down about a hundred thousand from last year. I checked with Director Tyson, and apparently this number is driven by a percentage of a certain number. And so one of the things that we'll probably be coming back to you is, is trying to come up with another way to calculate this number where we don't lose growth in this rainy day fund because the base number for the percentage has gone down. So I'd rather say, you know, whatever, if we're at a certain level and the percentage actually results in a lower number, then we're gonna stay at the higher level. Because it's good to have this economic stability reserve. That also shows between that reserve and our fund balance, that fortifies us for any contingencies for emergencies. Assigned to, these are compensated absences, and so this is the result, or this is the sort of summation of the amount that we would owe for vacations and various other leaves. We've also got dollars set aside for capital projects. And as we move to the next section, the unassigned balance is five point three four three million. And so that's the general fund overview. The same general format applies to the other funds. I will be analyzing the other funds as time goes on and as we find things worth reporting, we will bring it to the council. And I, so that, that concludes my report, I hope it wasn't too technical. But I wanted to at least let you know that when Lorenzo looks at somebody's CAFR, these are the areas I go to first. Because I want to just get right to the nitty gritty, because I don't want to go through two hundred pages, I want to go right to it. This and the M D N A and the transmittal letter. And that's, that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. And I think we're all open for questions.
Thank you, and, and yeah, if Ms. Tyson, Mr. Young and Mr. Heinz build questions from the council, I have several questions, I'm actually gonna start with just one, and then I'm gonna just state my others for after other council speaks, just because I don't want to bulk them all at the end and make it too long. But I specifically want to touch on so I, I remember the, the last CAFR, Brandon, I think you and I had this, this guy, sorry, Mr. Young. When we had our live meeting the last time, and you had also, one of your letters stated about the, the deficiency in the reconciliations. And so I'm sure it was very, I went back and glanced at it, and it was very similar to this one in, in respects where it, it said, you know, there's a, there's a, you know, problem with reconciling the accounts, and then there was your recommendation, which basically stated, and I'm actually trying to find that really quick. Letters, put the red letter. Okay, so here it says your recommendation is that they recommend the city establish procedures to ensure all bank reconciliations for all bank accounts are completed timely and reconciled to accounting records. This was very similar to what you said last time. My problem with that is, basically you found a deficiency, and then it talks about, you know, what the causes were, it talks about, you know, that we had COVID, and we had a cyber attack and and there was a little bit of carryover and all that. But what, what I found that was kind of contradicting a little bit is, so your recommendation basically says, you know, that, that you recommend the city establish procedures. So procedures to me, so I started looking like procedures versus policy, well, policy actually, the definition is a procedure, it's like they're almost the same thing. So what I found on the other letter where it talks about, you know, your first letter, it actually first says in the second paragraph, under significant audit findings, it says that management is responsible for the selection and uses of appropriate accounting policies, and it says the significant accounting policies used by the city are described in the notes to the financial statements, no new accounting policies were adopted and the application of existing policies were not changed during fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. So my problem is if last year we were found to have a reconciliation problem, and you made a similar recommendation where we should, you know, basically start getting on top of that. To me, it's like, okay, well, we started doing that, we started doing a better job at it, but we just fell short because of some things that happened, but your statement here seems to imply that there was no policy changes whatsoever, so, I mean, was there, was there policy set in place to start remedying that problem, they just weren't followed, or I, I'm just struggling because it seemed like you said they totally contradict, well, they don't contradict each other, they basically say, you know, we've recommended something. And based on the last CAFR was same problem, and, and it seems like we haven't really you know, we, it sounds to me like we haven't adopted policy, could you address that specific thing, Mr. Young?
Yeah, so the, the primary, the primary thing to consider is that the accounting policies versus the internal procedures are different things. The accounting policies in the CAFR are policies of how the balance sheet items and the items in the CAFR are recorded and reflected, those are accounting policies as to how they have to be recorded. Internal procedures, that's not what that letter is referring to. As far as how the city prepares their bank recs and their procedures for getting them done timely, that's not something that is disclosed in the CAFR, what you're seeing at the policies is there there are things as, what is the investment policy that they can invest in? How, how the receivables reflected, what is the inventory method, those are the accounting policies. The procedures is a different thing, that's not part of the CAFR. So that is a little bit of, a little bit of the confusion. So as far as the procedures, yeah, so the, the finding is, is very similar. It hasn't proven when we first started working with the city, and really at the end of the day, what it is, is when you're talking about your cash and your bank recs. Sometimes there are challenges with staffing, sometimes there are challenges with the system that is being used, other systems all function differently. At the end of the day, you need to be able to reconcile every amount in your bank account as timely as you can, because there are errors or things that need to be caught, you'd want them caught quicker versus three months down the road, and really for a bank rec, every item should be accounted for, reconciled without any reconciling items, or in theory, it's not really, so. So there has been vast improvement. If, I'm hoping that there is a regular year and they, that city can get caught up, they have got caught up from where they were at. But that is why they're, they're still a little bit behind as far as the timing and some of the issues. Some of the items we were seeing as considered reconciling items on the, on June bank recs, that is the reason we're still being disposed as a, as a finding.
So basically, in your opinion, you, you, you did, you did say the word, you mentioned that you've seen vast improvement, so taking into account of our, of our cyber attack, which obviously was a huge setback, I can you know, I probably can't even begin to imagine, because I don't work in the finance department, but I can try to imagine. And the carryover issues, I mean, do you think that in your opinion that you, you saw a, a genuine effort or, or actual improvement proceeding when, when those things happened? I mean, are you're not able to look at it in like certain time stamps?
There is, no, there's absolutely an, an effort, it's just, you know, when you're looking at, when a bank rec is done and approved, you when a bank rec is done and approved, you as an auditor, you can't can't really factor an effort. But they are from the timing that we got here, I think the city was probably six months behind, to be honest with you, when we first came through three, three years ago. And now that's to the point where it's not as much of an issue that they are behind. They are getting reconciliations done. It's just some of the items that are still on there as as just considered reconciling items need to be researched and addressed timely or so it's 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 a vast improvement, but there are still improvements that that we feel can be made.
Okay. Also, too, on the page, independent auditors' report on internal controls, I don't know if this is just a typo, but on the first paragraph, it says issued by the comptroller. I'm sure that was meant, was that supposed to say controller, the Controller General of the United States?
No, that that actually is what it what it's called.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Okay, I I used to think it was the same thing, but now I've done so many of these that actually is.
All right. Well, I have some other questions, but I'm going to let my other council members go ahead, and we'll circle back. So we'll start with our Vice Mayor. Paul, Mr. Sandy, do you have any questions for any of our staff or Mr. Young?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you, Mr. Young. You bring some letters or bring that audit on that. And I'd also like to thank you, Ms. Nice and and Mr. Heinz, give us a presentation. My first question is, Mr. Janga, there is a, you, usually, I see in the first letter, say, we express no opinion on it. I mean, when you guy do the audit, what kind of thing you cannot do the opinion on that you find it's something wrong on the audit? And can you a little bit explain to me explore on that?
Yeah, can you let me know what letter you're looking at?
I'm looking at the first letter, the second page. First letter, second page on the city response to findings.
Oh, on the, yeah, so, um, okay, I was on the wrong letter. So essentially, what that means is that is that the response you see in there is is what the city has responded. We are we're not auditing their response. But they are are indicating that they are going to do to rectify the situation, but it's not, it's not really an audit response because it's it's but it's their corrective action plan.
Well, usually auditor, as your firm does not any any opinion on that, right?
We don't because what they're going to do moving forward. So there's really no way to verify that they are, that's what they are saying they're going to do. There's no documentation that we would be able to look at to to verify if that if it's happened, it's what we would look at basically next year to see if they have actually done that, and the finding would fall off.
Okay, the my next question is on the same piggyback the mayor bank reconciliation procedure. You know, this year ago, we see the same thing, right? Right?
Yeah. Yeah.
And this year, when you audit it, is is find the same thing?
I they were, they're still, as I mentioned before, I mean, there are still things that need to be rectified. But there have been vast improvements, and the city is actively working to rectify them. So it it is the same process that that needs still some improvement, but I would not say it was the exact same thing, no.
And then you also mentioned something you do you guys doing from last three year, this order for the city, right? And you see this problem was starting from last two, three years?
Yes, when we first started auditing the city, they were behind on their bank recs, and they have worked to catch up, correct?
So there is almost three year, and we cannot correct it, and we have a different city manager, right?
Yeah, yes, it has been improved. It can still, there are still some improvements that can be made, yes.
Okay, then my next question, there's a letter there, I believe in the last letter. You know, new accounting standard, that standard is due to cover the, you know, can you might we little bit go through again? That new accounting standards.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Now, the question is, gas statement number eighty-eight, gas statement number eighty-four. So can you a little bit explain to on that, what that mean?
Sure, yeah. So so those, basically, the governmental accounting standards board, they they write the accounting standards for the way certain transactions and and specific issues that that arise in governments, how they have to be disclosed or or recorded. So every year, there are different different ones that they are working on that have implementation dates. So Gatsby seven eighty-eight was was not super impactful to to the city. What it was is just having to add to break out the balance sheet and basically current and long term for governments was the primary primary factor that was changed. Gatsby four has to do with how any fiduciary activities are recorded at the city. The city has agency funds. And there are certain, the agency funds that the city has will be evaluated to ensure they are still classified. The term agency fund is going to be going away. It's going to be called a custodial fund, and this presentation will be a little bit different. That will be implemented next year. The city doesn't have a ton of fiduciary activities, so that also again won't be incredibly impactful. The main one, as I mentioned, coming up, has to do with leases, and it's Gatsby eight seven, which will be implemented in two years.
All right, then my last question, do you A B three, seven, seven, three? And I believe your report said you guys ordered everything is okay this year, right? And if you remember, I don't know the last year, there was what's the difference between last year and this year?
Well, for one, we don't audit everything pertaining to the fund. And every year, there are different transactions. Every year, basically, we are doing a testing of transactions for the year under audit. So last year, we were looking at transactions that occurred this year, twenty nineteen. And this year, transactions that occurred this year, twenty twenty. So that that's the the compare, that's the difference.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Mayor, let's move to the next person, then I'll welcome back.
Sure, I'll give you another opportunity to speak, Mr. Papinow. Thank you. First off, thank you for the excellent presentation and clarification of the two hundred pages. And hats off to prior council for the tough cuts that had to be made and apparently were effective. And to the city staff across the board working under those conditions so successfully. The only real question I had goes to page thirty-seven, Mr. Heinz, you pointed us to the changes in net position where four out of five of our proprietary funds ended up with a negative change in that position. And you had briefly mentioned a possibility of increase in fees. And so just, you know, want to clarify, that would trigger on your part, I assume a kind of a review top to bottom of the the category and the efficiencies that could be achieved before looking at the necessity to to raise any fees in those areas?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Unless those fees have been pre-approved by council, yes.
Okay. That's good. And then I looking up above in those categories, one of the biggest expenses in each of them is actually depreciation expenses. Are those, to me, they seem that they would be kind of fixed, but there's really not a lot we can do to to remedy those. Is there, am I missing anything? Or is there a way that to work with that area?
Well, those, all of those functions are pretty capital intensive. And so that capital needs to be depreciated. We're not allowed to expense that capital just in one fell swoop. So we've got to depreciate it over a number of years. But yeah, that's always going to be part of the equation for these types of funds.
So that's just pretty much on a set trajectory, and we can, we can predict what that's going to be for years.
Yes, unless unless these funds acquire more capital, then that'll that'll change the schedule a little bit. And I believe we have a note somewhere in this document that that lays out the depreciation.
Okay, very good. That's my only question right now. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, you know, having they presented this, I feel like some responsibilities know probably more than I need to, but I would like to say to staff, I would hate to have been in your position with a cyber attack, having a multimillion dollar city to run. And basically, all your information is wiped clean, and you're handed a piece of paper and a pencil and told to account. So considering that and the fact that the auditor has said, you know, there has been some problems, but you still managed to improve those things, and and we're headed in the right direction. That's that's an outstanding by job by everybody in staff and accounting. So I I applaud that. Don't don't get me wrong, so. You know, when when the auditor said they took six to eight weeks to prepare this, and then we were given four days, it's it's a bit difficult to absorb a hundred and eighty-five pages of information and be confident that you understand every bit of it enough to give it a blessing, you know? So I just have a couple of questions. On the the four point six, seven million write-off, it says due to repayment and denial. So could you just clarify that a little bit further, please?
I'll let Claire do that one.
Sure. The city, the council approved back in November, the write-off of these loans. These loans were really not money moving around. They were very old transactions that were created based on the city's efforts to do redevelopment in certain depressed areas. And in doing so, the city waived certain costs for developers or for for basically developers and to encourage that in those improvements, a lot of them in the downtown area. And then the city recorded them as though they were loans. In other words, the anticipation was that the money streams coming from the state would help pay these off and make all of the funds whole. Well, the reality is this, the redevelopment agency at the state level was dissolved. They put in something called successor agency, which was supposed to basically wind down and get rid of all of these activities. And then the Department of Finance at the state level came in and said, those loans are not real loans, and so you need to wipe those out. The city came back and challenged that opinion and spent a little bit of time trying to, as many cities did, because this was not uncommon. This was a normal treatment at many cities. And the city went back and tried to challenge those and was unsuccessful. We've gone through a number of steps to make improvements in the financial records of the successor agency. This was one of those steps was to complete the write-off. We'd been recording it as a reduction in the available fund balance in prior years. So these funds did not anticipate ever receiving those monies once the state had made those denials. So we needed to just clean up the records and get rid of this. This, what was called an interfund loan. There's there's also another piece of this that had to do with the senior place, but it's the same kind of thing where waivers were granted, and it was recorded as loans, and it just needed to be cleaned up. So that's what we did in that particular fiscal year was we cleaned that up, council approved it. And we'll move forward now with other activities of successor agency to kind of wind that down. I hope that answered your question.
The council member, Councilmember Vandenberg, I also wanted to just mention that this entire story appears, and I believe the November thirtieth, twenty twenty staff report before council and where we lay it out in detail as to the history and our recommended action. And at that point in time, council accepted it.
Right, no, I remember. Thank you. And so this is going to happen in successive years to come, and how many?
Oh, I hope never again.
No, no, this was it. This was it. Now we're we're done.
That's that's what I wanted to hear. So about the auditing process itself, this is not a line-by-line audit. It's a sample audit, correct? Just for general knowledge of the public and myself, that's you take random items selected or random sections maybe and verify that all accounting is done to standard, correct?
It it isn't exactly. Not exactly. So and and the CAFER itself, essentially, every line item in the CAFER that you see is audited from by a variety of different procedures. So like a line that says cash and investments, or a line that says receivables or notes and loans receivable, there are, there are different procedures that is done on each one of those lines. For example, cash and investments is is confirmed a hundred percent if possible with the third-party banks. And then we are testing the bank recs and the outstanding checks for capital assets. We are testing the additions. A lot of times that that is sampled. So you're not going through every capital asset addition. We are verifying the disposals. We're doing analytics on depreciation expense to make sure it's in line with the city policies. For revenue and expense line items, there is a lot of analytical procedures and sampling involved. So every line item in the financial statement has audit procedures performed, but we are not looking at every transaction, no.
And then just one thing, it says page four, six, but I'm not sure that's correct, but under Parks and Recs, oh, oh, six, states the rent for each, the rents shall be utilized solely for parks and recreation. But isn't that everything under that property? That's not really a true statement. It's any any revenue generated from those forty-four, forty-eight acres must go to parks and recreation?
But it's essentially the rents from the market is the the significant revenue coming into the Parks and Rec is that element of, you know, rents from vendors at the market. That's primarily what those revenues are.
Right. I understand that, but I thought the the term significant was changed to every.
It was changed substantial to solely, that's the change that was made.
There you go.
Yes.
So when it says rents, that to me, that denotes a particular section of revenue, not all of it.
In the statement for the market, all of the revenues are listed there.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
And we will circle back if you have formal questions before we finish on this item. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I'm, I thank you all for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Young and Mr. Heinz, Ms. Tyson. I I too am going to go to the document that indicates that we had a significant issue with bank reconciliation. I I I get that we've had some some obstacles in the way. And I was in my conversations with some folks earlier this week, including the the Youth Commission. I, one of the things that council members to, we have two real primary responsibilities in that. And one is the budget and the policies related to spending in the budget. And you know, the accounting for the the citizens' money. And then the other is to manage the city manager. And and so I take both of those very seriously. We are on year three of bank record reconciliation issues. I have a huge, huge problem with that. And, you know, just from a a basic knowing where your money is, if I were to do that in my own home and be six months out, that would cause a significant issue. And I certainly don't have a multimillion dollar budget at my home. So my question is, is and to whoever wants to answer, we we're already eight months into our next CAFER. But well, not CAFER. The the documentation for our next CAFER, which is supposed to come to us probably in December or January of next year, but is effective through through June thirtieth. Are we yet going to have another year of an issue with bank reconciliation reconciliation? And 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 trust me, I I understand that there's been improvement. But three years. And so so the question is, and and it's not rhetorical. Are we going to have the same issue at our next CAFER, which we are already eight months into that that fiscal year?
Apparently, we don't expect to have that recurrence. I can speak to some of the improvements made. I can also speak to the risk factors associated with bank reconciliation. I can speak to some of the improvements made. I can also speak to the risk factors associated with bank reconciliation. It's something we take very seriously.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
I didn't expect for us to have this issue again this year. And so my question is, is this going to be something that our auditors are going to find next year? And what are we doing to prepare for that and prepare our staff to ensure that it doesn't reoccur?
Yes. Great question. We've made some internal procedural changes and we've done those consecutively each of the three years. Those improvements involve, not to get too detailed, but a bank reconciliation at a city level has several inputs. And there are multiple locations at the city that collect revenues. And there's a couple of areas that do disbursements. So each one of those have those feeds into that process has to be managed. We've made improvements in each one of these areas. And we don't anticipate having another, we highly are reliant upon the financials and the electronic systems. So that last year, you're absolutely right. I think you or someone asked, do we expect to have this reoccurring? And I said, we don't expect to have it reoccurring. But I had no idea that the ability to gain data at that level would be hindered for three months. I don't expect that to happen again. I expect our systems to be running. We've made additional changes to try and improve. If you were to lose the electronic records, how do you record that data? How do you track it? One of the things that we did more than two years ago was to improve our weekly cash flow reconciliations. Those continue to occur and they occurred even when the cyber attack happened. That minimizes the risk. It doesn't get the bank reconciliation completed, reviewed, has multiple reviews, multiple sign-offs. When we have significant vacancies, that can delay things. And in the first year of that finding that was the case, the reviews weren't happening. Those are happening consistently now. So in answer to your question, no, I didn't expect it to happen a third time either. And, but we continue to make improvements. We don't expect it to recur again. And if it does, I'm going to be answering to you. I understand.
I appreciate that explanation. You know, I'd like to point to the schedule of findings on the document. Under the management's response, significantly limited staffing resources and critical vacancies, even after reorganizations to improve and streamline accounting activities.
Yes.
What are we doing to ensure that we have, and again, Ms. Tyson, this is not necessarily directed at you because I don't supervise you. But what I would say is, what are we doing as a manager, not a city manager, but a manager of an organization or an department to ensure that we have the staffing in place to take care of this? Listen, this is, this is the citizens' money and I want to be sure that we are doing everything we can. And I don't mean to sound like I'm overcritical because I really aren't. I'm really not trying to be. I just, I just want to make sure that, that we're moving in the right direction. I'll have to say, this is my ninth CAFR that I've heard, not from just the city of Galt. And, and you know, when we have an issue for a year or two, I can, I can live with that, but it's just starting to become an issue for me.
We take that very seriously. I appreciate that you do also. I, as a director over this area, I understand my responsibilities to the risks associated with any kind of financial problem. This reconciliation is very important to us. As I said, we've improved certain processes. We are very thinly staffed, as you know. Finance is one of the departments that has one of the temporary frozen positions. We will be working with city manager. He's been very supportive of us trying to get the right accountants in the right place. But at the end of the day, if I have somebody exit to go to another job, I have to put the right people in place to do whatever process is necessary to keep things moving. And that is a challenge some days.
So Councilmember Lozano, one of the things that we will be doing over the next few months is I will be bringing in someone to review the entire finance function to assess it for staffing and capability and capacity. So given my background, I, there are things in the organization that, you know, that I think I can help Claire with or Director Tyson with, but I need a third party to come in and give us an assessment of where things are. This, this function, just like the IT function are in my mind, sort of the wheels on the bus. And so I need to make sure that they're optimally staffed. Doesn't necessarily mean more staff. It just means it may mean that reshuffling the folks that we have, maybe training issues. There may be a number of issues, but I want to make sure that we're maximizing what we have. We just hired a new accounting manager. She started, I believe, yesterday. And so we have that very critical position filled. And so yes, there are a couple of vacancies within the financial, but I want to have a third party come in and take a look at how we're doing business. There are a number of issues that other council members have brought to me as well about receipts of dollars and cash receipts, things like that, that I also want to have looked into. So again, during my next six months here, we'll take a look at those. And yes, and we will do our best to make sure that this finding does not reappear. And Claire and I will be talking about bank recs tomorrow.
I appreciate it. And thank you so much. I am supportive of whatever you need to do to help, to help manage that. I appreciate it. And I think we can move forward in a positive direction. I have a list of other questions, but I'm not going to go through them in the interest of time and they're not as significant, but I'll circle back at a later time. Appreciate, Mr. Mayor, if you allow me to have the time. And I'm done.
Sure. This is an important subject and I don't think we, you know, it's hard. How do you rush through questions on a, you know, 150-page CAFR and, you know, four different letters that, to be honest with you, you know, I personally had to read some of the paragraphs four times to understand because the lingo itself is very confusing, especially when it weighs in on, you know, opinions and compliance and so on and so forth. And it's like, it could be very daunting. So, you know, and I don't want to kick a dead horse on what Rich was talking about. But I think what came to my mind when he was talking about it, what's kind of frustrating is that regardless of what the problem was, let's just say it was the staffing issue. Let's just say cyber attack aside, I think the staffing probably to me was probably a bigger problem in this. But what's frustrating to me is that, you know, who was responsible for those positions not being there? Well, I was and Rich was and Paul was, the people that were here when we voted to freeze those positions. So that's frustrating to me is that, and not to place blame squarely on anyone, but we were presented with, you know, a bunch of budget cuts. And I don't remember the conversation with, well, and okay, here's what we're going to do to Parks and Rec. Here's what we're going to do to finance, but and we're going to freeze, you know, this position and not hire this position and so on. But I just want to let you know, by doing that, this is going to significantly cause a problem with us reconciling this issue that was pointed out by our auditors. I mean, I don't remember that conversation. So for me, that would have been very enlightening to know. It's like, well, wait, wait a minute, because you know, managing our citizens' money is, as Councilmember Lozano mentioned, is very important. And so had we known that and that this was going to cause a huge problem, I, I, I think we maybe could have, you know, we had hard decisions to make, but again, it's frustrating because we're only, you know, being advised by, by you know, our city managers at the time and so on. And I think, you know, I know all the departments were, including yourself, Claire, were asked, you know, you know, what could your department do? What can we do? You know, we need to cut X amount of each ones and those rules presented. But I mean, this is like just from, and as Councilmember Lozano said, just from a simple money standpoint, like if we at home, like just don't reconcile our bank statements, I mean, I can go out and, you know, potentially write a hot check. I mean, because you don't know what you have. So I know it's far more complicated than that in the world of the finance department, but I just, we're just, I think, Councilmember Lozano and the rest of us who was looking at it from a layman's standpoint, saying that this is a big issue. It's not like we had a CAFR that came back and said, look, we took care of that issue, but now we actually got this other issue going on. It's like the same issue. So I feel like maybe it's just not being prioritized as much. It seems too that it is now, like Mr. Young stated that there's been progress. You've stated that, you know, you're making strides to take care of that. Mr. Heinz has stated that we're hiring positions that are going to hopefully remedy that. But I think this is a big exclamation point that I think Rich, you know, Mr. Lozano really, you know, put some huge emphasis on it and he's not over, you know, he's overstating it. It's a big deal. So I don't want to kick that dead horse anymore because clearly I think everybody gets the message here. I just want to ask one last question to Mr. Young. Actually, Mr. Heinz, just a couple of questions for you, just real quick. On page three of the CAFR, there's a comment, it's the fourth bullet point down where it talks about property tax and it says, real property, real property assessed valuations have increased by 5.8% over the prior year. Is that referring to just having more property tax because of additional homes? Or is that, is that referring to reevaluations like the rise in property values? And so in respects, now we're collecting more property tax. Is that what that refers to?
I'm going to, give me just a second. I'm trying to get back to the staff report. And so this is page three of six?
Page three of the actual CAFR itself. There's bullet points, there's five bullet points. It's the fourth one down.
I think it's Roman numeral three, Mr.
Okay. All right. Give me just a second to get there. While I'm, while I'm getting to that page, I wanted to just let the council know. The last fiscal year may not be the last fiscal year where reductions have to be made or service cuts or not service cuts, but so we will bring you the impacts of those service cuts. But bottom line, we as a staff have to get the work done. And so that's the culture I've come from for the last almost 30 years. Where there hasn't been a whole lot of resources, there hasn't been a whole lot of increases. It's all about making do with what you have. And that will be our culture going forward. We will inform you of here are the impacts of the cuts, but we'll find a way to get it done. And I just wanted to make sure you all heard that from me.
And I understand that, you know, it's a domino effect. I mean, the cyber attack obviously had a hand in this. Who's fault in cyber attack? Well, obviously that was an IT issue. And, you know, I for one can tell you from, you know, my experiences with seeing some of the IT, you know, infrastructure at the city of Galt years before I was involved in the city council, I was, you know, I'm in that, I'm in that industry and I've seen it and I'm like, this is, you know, you know, there's some major improvements needed here. So those were just, that's just a can that got kicked down the road, maybe because we didn't have the money or whatever. And then we have a cyber attack and now we're just like, so it just culminates. I get it.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll be more proactive. And again, we'll find a way to get it done. I just wanted to make that commitment to the five of you and to the folks listening. Now regarding the bullet on page three, so the county does property tax assessment valuations, the ROL, as it's typically called. And, and the valuations have increased by 5.8% over the year. So that county ROL has increased almost 6%. So we're expecting some increase in property taxes. Now, I know things work a little different in Sacramento County than they do in San Mateo County. So an increase in the ROL doesn't necessarily correspond, doesn't necessarily produce a corresponding increase in our property taxes. All we know is the ROL is going up. And so we expect to see some level of increase when we see those property tax receipts.
Yeah. And that's what I was just getting at. It's good to see that. And I saw some of our financial graphs before where it shows property taxes were expected to keep, you know, on the, on the incline. But, you know, that is our biggest revenue, obviously. And to see that's a huge uptick. And I see houses selling really fast and there's houses turnover that, you know, the properties are reassessed and there's new taxes. I'm seeing on page 138 of the CAFR, it looks like just in the last 10 years, we've went, you know, we've increased basically like almost $900,000 in property tax increase.
And Mr. Mayor, you're starting, you're, you're thinking strategically like I hoped you, hope we all would, because at some point in the next month or two, we will be bringing a 10-year forecast of these revenues to you all. And just to show you where we think we're going. Along with an interim financial statement of where we are here in 2021. But the trends that you see on page 138 will factor in to some of those forecasts, not, not a great deal as we go further back, but the trends that we see over the, maybe the 2018, 19 and 20 year. And so that'll impact the growth as well, as well as the development projects that we have currently on, on board and that Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Selling have mentioned to you. So yeah, we'll do our best to project out what those property taxes will be. I think we've got HDL, Claire, if I'm, let me know if I'm wrong. We have HDL helping us with our property tax as well. Is that?
We are gathering data.
Okay. Okay. So we've got an outside consultant helping us with not only sales tax, but they'll also be helping us with property taxes. They're very good at what they do. I used them over in my former position and they were very helpful in helping us project property taxes. So we've got some professional help in that area too.
And those graphs in the back of the CAFR are actually pretty interesting. All the ones with, you know, the biggest sales tax providers as far as company, Galt and employers. There's a lot of actually interesting things in those. So anyways.
So Mr. Mayor, and I'm glad you brought that up because that section is called supplemental information. And so it's all good information about where we've been, where we are. And so it's good, it's good information about Galt. And, and so I've always, even once you get beyond the sort of the statements, it's the supplemental information that gives you the details as to, okay, here's what Galt is all about. Biggest employers, overlapping debt, debt margin, just various other things, operating indicators by function. There's just a whole lot of capital asset utilization. There's just all kinds of good stuff here. If you're, if you're an accountant geek like myself.
So I have one last question, then I'm going to be done. I'm going to go back around to the council. This, this one just is for Mr. Young. And I know I kind of pounded this one pretty hard last time, you know, this whole issue with the AB 3773. But for those watching at home, I just, you know, this, this is something that is coming up every year. But you know, in your statement, you basically say, you know, in our opinion, the city complied in all material respects with requirements referred to above that are applicable, applicable to Parks and Recreation Fund for the year. So basically what you're saying is, you know, you guys say this every year, well, we, in our opinion, the city's complied in all material respects. So what respects are you saying that you can't really weigh in on? I mean, again, I, last year, I think it's like, well, we're not a turn, like we even said it here, our audit, our audit does not provide legal determination of compliance. So you're saying that your opinion, we are compliant, but over here you say, but we're not going to provide legal determination that you're compliant. So would you like to please explain the difference of those two?
Yeah, the primary difference of why it's in all material respects is because we are sampling transactions that are a significant dollar amount that should be representative of the population, but we're now looking at every transaction. So if there is a transaction that was not selected, we, that was out of compliance, we would not know about it because that's not one that we selected. Of all the items we selected that we compared to AB 3773 as to what their money should be spent for. They were in compliance with the Assembly Bill and that is the opinion that we are giving. And as you mentioned, yeah, the, as far as a legal determination of what the Assembly Bill is staying, of what is compliant, we, we are CPAs and we are not attorneys. That's basically what that's telling you.
Yeah. So basically just kind of put it in layman's terms, your job is to make sure that two plus two equals four. And that when the check was written, that, you know, that check was written for something that looks like it was being spent for Parks and Recreation and not, you know, something for the police department. Looks like it was being spent for Parks and Recreation and not, you know, something for the police department or something.
In layman's terms, that's, that's a good way to describe it, yes.
Okay. So I mean, it, it's hard for you to weigh in on things like, you know, one of the big questions that comes up every year. Is about the sales tax, you know, on the market, like all the sales, the sales tax collected on sales at the Galt market don't go. To Parks and Recreation as far as I know. So there's always this, this constant question, well, why don't they? Because the assembly bill says all. Monies made on that property are supposed to go to Parks and Rec, but that's not, that, that falls into the legal. Like whatever, that's not an accounting question.
Yeah, because exactly what, what you're asking is, is a legal determination of what the assembly bill is staying and directing the, the city to do and that, uh, is, is not what, that's not what we are doing.
And I'm not sitting here saying for any reason that we're not being compliant. I know there's a lot of. Questions for decades, whether or not the Galt, you know, there's talk about the central service costs and well, that's technically, you know, I mean, there's this, there, I think there's. You know, uh, there's always different opinions and so. But what I just seem to find is that every year we're having an accountant tell us that we're compliant with AB three seven seven three, when really sometimes I feel like it should be. Like, you know, maybe, uh, an attorney. Well, I know our city attorney will say that we are, but I feel like. You know, sometimes people look for a different opinion from somebody. So, um, I do appreciate you, you know, giving us. The best you can on saying that we, we, you know, for the most part, we believe you are and so on and so forth. I know that's not going to be good enough for everybody, but. It, this is just a big deal. I mean, it's a big issue. It's a, it, it's something that's been, you know, around longer than, you know, I've even been alive. So to put it bluntly, so, um. I, I, it's just something that I have to ask each year and, and, and kind of dive into that. So I appreciate. Your answer, Mr. Young. And with that, I will let, um, another council member go. Does anybody have? Um, just raise your hand if you have other further questions. I can just call you out.
If I may, I would just add, Mr. Farmer, um, yeah, I, I don't want anybody to think that, 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 uh, that letter is, is taken lightly. We do do a lot of work surrounding it and it is, uh, we. We read the assembly bill, we sample a lot of transactions. So we, I know it's important to the city and it's important to us as well. But yeah, like you said. We as accountants are interpreting what the assembly bill is, is saying and verifying that the transactions that we have looked at are in accordance with essentially our interpretation of the bill.
And Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll also take a look at. Uh, our interpretation of this bill and, and make sure that I'm comfortable where we are. With how we're interpreting it. Uh, now that we've settled measure R, I'll turn my attention to this particular issue. Um, also I wanted to correct myself. Um, the section that you were reading from last, uh, that you brought up a minute ago was from the statistical section. And I mistakenly called it the supplemental section. So my apologies. Um, um, so I wanted to make sure that was corrected for the record. But yeah, I will be looking in AB three seven seven three. Uh, just to, especially now that the Galt Market Plan will be coming before council at some point in the near future. So. Um, I just thought I'd let you know.
I told you that when we were talking the other day, that this is similar to measure R when there is this. Interpretation and there's just varying opinions and, and I think there's never going to be a res, a full resolution to, to, uh, accomplish, you know, to. Suffice all those opinions. And so.
I understand.
It's just one of those things. So anyway, council members, uh, any other council members have a question? Just raise your hand if you do.
Uh, I don't have a question, but I will make a comment. Uh, thank you for Mr. Heinz. If you can look up that AB three seven, seven. Uh, you know, that's in my opinion, you, we really need to look up and, and see what's in it. There's a different opinion. So every year it is coming a different opinion. I know. So we have to come some kind of conclusion here we can go.
Yes, I agree. Um, it's, it was the same approach with measure R. Um, you know, we took, I took a look at it. I got the city attorney's blessing. I presented it. Now we move on and now I no longer have to worry about making sure the police get. The funding and the, the resources they need. And so as we move forward with this gold market plan. I have to get this AB three seven seven three issue settled because I don't need that particular distraction. While we're trying to make big decisions about that property. And so I'll, I'll be looking into that as well.
Ms. Steiner, you got a comment?
No, I, I, excuse me, I was just going to state that. My office has given the city an opinion on, um. AB three seven seven three, which I believe Mr. Heinz has and is clear, you know. And so we've already, we've been working on that issue and we all, you know, we're happy to continue to work on that issue to. To resolve any lingering questions that people have.
Okay.
And I appreciate that, but as we all know, I mean, even attorneys, you know, ten attorneys will have ten different opinions. So. Um, sometimes the opinion of the city, our city manager, or our city attorney isn't, isn't, uh. Always the end all be all in some people's eyes. So, but I, you know, I just, you know, that's just how it is. So.
Right. And I, right. And I would just note that the bill does use the term rent as it, it doesn't use the term, um. You know, revenue, it uses the term rent. So.
Interesting. Thank you.
Yeah. So again, these are things we'll be looking at and so don't, uh, don't be totally surprised if we have another robust conversation. About this issue coming before council at some point in the future.
Yeah. Um, any other council member have questions for staff before we move off of this item? Okay. Well, I appreciate everybody's comments. I think everybody has something to add and to be honest with you, we were given this like Thursday. And so I was looking at this while I was on vacation and I was looking at this driving over to where I'm at now. And I spent like three hours looking at it last night when I was eating dinner. And so it's hard to take it all in and. So for all you council members, asked the questions are all great questions. And I think, you know, um, I think the people of Galt can. Feel rest assured that we're, you know, we're digging deep, but we obviously have a lot of trust in you, Mr. Heinz. And that's why we hired you is that you're going to, uh, you know, there's, there's obviously a certain amount of trust that we have to have in you. Um, because your expertise in this, in this wheelhouse is, is, um. Uh, you know, exceeds all of us. So.
And, um. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
And I also just wanted to extend the invitation to any council member or any member of the public. That has questions about this CAFER. Uh, we're here to answer questions. I believe there is a statement in the CAFER. That if you have any questions, contact us, me, Claire, we'll be happy to take you through it. Um, there was a point in my life where, um, I actually taught. CAFERS to CPA candidates. So. You, you, you know, so it's, it's, it's no bother. Feel free. Um, the door is always open. You know, I'm, you know, and I'm always happy to, to teach this stuff and so is Claire.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, at this point I'm looking for a motion to accept. The City of Galt Comprehensive Annual Financial Report or CAFER for the fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Memorandum and Internal Control and Required Communications for the Year. Ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Independent Accountants Report on Compliance with Proposition. One eleven, twenty nineteen dash twenty appropriations limit increment and independent auditors report on compliance with applicable. Requirement and on internal control over compliance regarding AB three seven seven three.
Mr. Mayor, can I, uh, I just want to comment, there's no public comments on this.
I'm sorry. I forgot to ask that. Is, uh, Ms. Roddick, or is there any hands raised online?
There are currently no hands raised.
Thank you. You can see her for reminding me of that. So I have a motion for the resolution that I just read.
I moved.
Moved by council. I will second that motion. We have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Dane.
Pardon me?
Abstain.
Councilmember Lo- Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Motion passes four and one abstain.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Young. We will now move on to our last item in our regular calendar, Public Works Department. Subject is the Solid Waste Ordinance. Update, uh, report by Mr. Selling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, bear with me shortly here while I attempt to share my screen. And hopefully you can all see the, uh, presentation.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Well, thank you again. Good evening, Mayor Farmer and council members. Uh, Mike Selling, I'm your city public works director and I'll be providing an overview of solid waste ordinance update. So under the California Constitution and Public Resources Code, the city has the authority to regulate the collection and disposal of solid waste generated within the city. Title eight, uh, Health and Safety of the City's Municipal Code is where this resides. This section was last updated in July of two thousand and seven. As a follow-up to the Collection Services Agreement approved in the month prior at that time. The Solid Waste Ordinance provides the policy framework for various aspects, including definition of terms, rates of billing, illegal dumping. Containers, collection, transport, special ways and violations. As you may recall from my overview presentation about a month ago, multiple state mandates have been passed in recent years. These mandates are focused on three primary objectives. First, to reduce the amount of air, uh, emissions produced from landfills, that is the methane and other greenhouse gases. Second, uh, reduce the amount of waste being landfillled. And third, increasing organics recycling, which includes food waste recovery. One of the mandates, SB thirteen eighty-three specifically requires municipalities to update their ordinance to reflect the legislative requirements. It's also needed to provide the backing for the city's service provider so they can meet the mandated service requirements. And then of course, it's necessary for the city itself to avoid potential fines and other penalties or enforcement action from the state. Since the last ordinance update in two thousand and seven, multiple legislative mandates have been passed that affect the way waste is handled in the state of California. Starting with AB three forty-one, which was passed in two thousand and eleven. This bill increased the overall landfill diversion set by a prior mandate, AB nine thirty-nine. From fifty percent to seventy-five percent by next year, twenty twenty-two. Additionally, to help achieve that level, AB three forty-one mandated recycling programs for businesses, public entities. And multifamily units such as apartments and condominiums that generate four cubic yards or more of waste per week. Next we have AB eighteen twenty-six, which was passed in two thousand and fourteen. This bill piggybacks on AB three forty-one and that it further requires recycling programs. For organics and food waste for the same entities. While the initial threshold was eight cubic yards per week, the legislation now requires these programs for generators of two cubic yards per week. As of last year and going forward. The last and most impactful mandate is SB thirteen eighty-three. This bill was passed in two thousand and sixteen and requires fifty percent of all organics to be diverted from landfills by last year, twenty twenty. The mandate becomes enforceable one year from now in January of twenty twenty-two. SB thirteen eighty-three also has a second tier that requires seventy-five percent of organics to be diverted by twenty twenty-five. As I noted in last month's overview, it's a statewide basis and not jurisdiction by jurisdiction. So for outreach, while there typically isn't much in the way of outreach done for an ordinance update like this, given the magnitude of these mandates, however. The city has proactively noted the need for an ordinance update relative to these state mandates over the past couple of years. References were made in various council presentations leading up to and after the franchise agreement. Specifically back in September two thousand and eighteen, when the agreement was approved. Then in January of two thousand and nineteen, when the rates were approved. And last, or actually July of twenty nineteen, when Cal Recycle representatives made a presentation that largely focused on SB thirteen eighty-three. More recently, the city sent letters to all commercial accounts advising of the new mandates just a couple of months ago in December. And also contacted the chamber, letting them know as well. Public Works, uh, only received one, uh, call inquiring about the applicability, uh, in response to those letters. I also reiterated the need for this ordinance update in the overview presentation. That I made last month and that the SB thirteen eighty-three legislation specifically requires an update. In that presentation, I further noted that city staff will be working in cooperation with Cal Waste. Staff to outreach to the commercial sector particularly to advise and assist them in achieving compliance. While SB thirteen eighty-three doesn't become enforceable until January of next year. The ordinance update is the key item needed to back the efforts that will occur over the remainder of this year to achieve compliance by that deadline. This update actually resulted in a great deal of much needed revision to reflect industry best practices. Many of the terms were deleted or revised and the code references were changed to reflect the mandates that I've noted. While the mandates are fairly strict, there are a couple of non-residential exemptions allowed. Such as for insufficient space to place the multiple receptacles. And a de minimis organics generation level, which is roughly a half a cubic yard per week or less. The mandate does also allow for some other exemptions for low population areas, basically that have less than seventy-five hundred people. And then higher elevation areas, which are above forty-five hundred feet in elevation. And obviously neither of those are applicable for the city of Galt and so they are not reflected in this ordinance update. Though the mandate does allow for self hauling of integrated waste, I want to point out that the city's franchise agreement largely restricts it. However, we have included it in this update to reflect the mandate. I would also note though, that for any city approved self hauling, the party will need to track and report to the city. The types and quantities being hauled and where they are taken. Not adhering to these requirements would result in enforcement action and likely required service in lieu of self hauling. With regard to next steps, the second reading of this ordinance is required and scheduled for the March sixteenth council agenda. City staff will continue to conduct outreach and education efforts on these state mandates to help everyone understand what's being required. Along with Cal Waste, city staff will also be conducting focused outreach engagement to the commercial customers. To ensure compliance with the state mandates, Cal Waste will deliver the recycling bins to organics. Uh. Will deliver the recycling bins to organics recycling customers, which is most businesses. City staff will also review and process applications for exemptions or self hauling. The city's website will reflect information and links to various resources to help answer questions and of course, staff will be available as well. And then lastly, staff will be working with Cal Waste staff as well as Cal Recycle to monitor and report on the types and quantities of organics received and processed. Mayor Farmer and fellow council members, this concludes staff's presentation. Along with myself, staff from Cal Recycle and Cal Waste are also in attendance tonight to answer questions. And I want to thank them for their willingness to attend and participate tonight. And specifically, we have, um, Ms. Furch and Mr. Carlson from Cal Recycle. And we have Mr. Baccarezza and Mr. Snyder from Cal Waste. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Start with our council members. Vice Mayor Sanders.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's, thank you for getting, uh, the report. Um, I just a few clarification or free question. The last time we updated back in two thousand and seven. And the reason we want to update now due to the SB thirteen. Thirteen eighty-three, that's why the main purpose or we usually have to update after certainly.
Yes, it's, it's really kind of a combination of those three bills, AB eighteen twenty-six, AB three forty-one, and then thirteen eighty-three.
Okay, then AB three forty-one, how far we are on that as a success rate as not as a city. As like I can say in a county visor California.
So I would defer that question to either Mr. Snyder or Mr. Baccarezza possibly to, uh, provide that information.
Can you repeat the question, please, Paul?
Uh, really the question is, you know, the AB three forty-one. You know, there is a lot of mandate before and sometimes they don't reach. Whatever they expected as they extend the year, I'm talking about especially on that AB three forty-one, whatever the requirement. How we far as a statewide or as a county wise or as a city wise, are we approaching? But they say fifty percent to seventy-five percent by twenty twenty-two. And they start back in twenty eleven, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So, the state's metrics of how they measure diversion has changed over the years, and I believe it's planned to change into the future. But currently, right now, we are meeting the diversion requirements of the state associated to the city. But when AB, when this new bill kicks in, in January 1st of this year, those metrics will change, and we need to craft our programs to keep up with the requirements of individual businesses. It's not necessarily grouped the same way that it was, where it's the diversion requirements of the city, but now it's actually requirements of the individual sites.
All right, thank you. Then, Mr. Selling, my next question, there is on the report is mentioned something is self-hauling. Could you little bit explore on that kind of detail? What, how are we gonna make in kick in or have something? Can you explain that to the public?
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor. So essentially, as far as self-hauling goes, someone, you know, would need to basically fill out a form. We've generated a form now and basically describe what they're proposing to do, what types of materials and where they would plan to take it, and then we would have to, you know, review and approve that. The other thing, too, is that they're going to have to report back to us, you know, that information. And, and the thing, too, that I know, or that I understand, I should say, and, you know, maybe Ms. Furch or Mr. Carlson might confirm it if I'm, or correct me if I'm wrong. But now the sites that you haul the waste to are reporting information to Cal Recycle as well as the, the service providers like Cal Waste. And so, the, you know, the information is looked at to make sure that it matches up. So, we would need to get that information from them to make sure that we're getting credit for whatever they're self-hauling. And, but really, what's the reason that they're self-hauling, too? Because per our franchise agreement, you know, essentially, everyone in the city is required to receive service from Cal Waste, so.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Papinow. From reading over the proposed changes and stuff, as far as I can tell, from my layman perspective, everything is consistent with the new laws. But I wanted to ask our guests if they've had a chance to review this, and if so, there's anything that is perhaps not perfectly in line with the new laws.
So, I believe that there are some things that the, the city ordinance states somewhat vaguely about, you know, when some of these organics containers will be dropped off. And so, right now, you know, it states in the new county code that all businesses shall have organic services and that they have to go through a process to determine if they're eligible to have these services. And I think that we need to just sit down with the city after this ordinance change is accepted, and we have to go through the minutia of when these dates hit and when do certain businesses have to have the organics cart on site as well as utilizing the current recycling cart that they have with their service right now. So, each commercial customer that pays for trash service has a minimum level of recycling service at their site. So, each, each customer that pays for a commercial trash service gets a 96-gallon cart on site. If they needed service over that, they have to sign up for that service above that. So, every commercial customer now has the ability to have that recycling service. It's whether they're utilizing it, and it would be implementing the dropping off of the organics cart and the timing with the city of when they felt it necessary to do that to be in compliance with the state mandates.
Okay, thanks, and that's, that's kind of where I was, was headed was, you know, I know that once this is in place, and you talked about that you're gonna have to go through each individual business or whatever, later to evaluate them one by one rather than categorically. And what I just kind of want to figure out is, is there anything that we need to adjust before we adopt this that's gonna, on your side or on the city's side, make that process more difficult or needs to be clarified here that, so we don't have to work around things later?
So, Todd Snyder's also on the call. He, he works with Cal Waste, and we've kind of gone through some of this process with Sacramento County currently. And maybe he could comment on that if he's available to talk.
Please, Mr.
Yes, he, he's coming back in just now.
All right.
Mr. Snyder, if you'd like.
Hello. Sorry, I just was welcomed back in. I believe the question was, have we had a chance to review the ordinance? And do we think it will cover the current legislation and future legislation? And we did have a chance to review the ordinance and, and how it applies into our franchise agreement and believe that it can cover the legislation that is currently happening as well as the future 1383.
Okay, yeah, and I appreciate that, because I know these things never come with any state funding to implement them. And so, I just want to make sure that, you know, we take advantage of the open conversation to craft it the best we can so that, for, for everybody involved.
Well, Mr. Papinow, quite frequently, you know, the, the state does quite, they do, they ban without plans. And so, we, as a private industry, have to kind of react to, then deal with it on the, on the back end. And, you know, back in, in 2019, when we had the new contract come on and with the, the environment with the commercial, our commercial customers in the city of Galt, you know, I, I think it is necessary to do more of an extensive outreach campaign with the rollout of organics, because this is, you know, whether we want to say it or not, this is an added service that we're requiring businesses to have. And Cal Waste is a, we've been the service provider in Galt since the early 80s, and, and we don't want to sacrifice that relationship with those customers anymore. So, I do think that we need to coordinate with the city, and Mike has been more than willing to do that with his staff to reach out to the customers and from a timeline of when these mandated services would need to hit the ground. We just need to be in communication with them, and we have been. But now that this is coming to fruition, with now there's some teeth to the legislation on how we're gonna, I guess, what's the words I'm looking for here, Todd?
Yeah, roll this out. I mean, we, we work very closely with, with the city staff and also Cal Recycle, and, you know, I don't want to put words in Cal Recycle's mouth, but, you know, they've, they've gone to, to great lengths to educate and try to provide tools to, all jurisdictions on, you know, updating their codes so that they can be prepared. I mean, when you step back and look at the big picture, we live in California, greenhouse gas emission is, is a, is a big deal here. So, the older legislation wasn't quite reducing the organics out of the landfill, therefore reducing the gas. So, there's more prescriptive legislation now that's gonna require businesses to, to have a more scrutiny of what's going in their waste stream. So, in terms of timing, there's, there's these three pieces of legislation that Mike detailed very well in his presentation. And, you know, as these, every, all jurisdiction, the whole state is ruling this out, those, those dates will, you know, become more relative as they are rolled out and cemented.
All right, well, I appreciate that from, from everybody. I do understand the state is imposing service, mandatory services that our, our businesses are gonna be required to have. And, you know, I believe in the last go-around with the contract, there were questions that went unanswered, and there were surprises that came. And I want to make sure there's, there's no surprises this time. So, starting from the ordinance, and then, secondly, the implementation. Want to make sure that all the, all the questions have been asked. So, thank you, guys, and I'll yield to the next council member. Thank you, Councilmember Papinow. Councilmember Vandenberg, if you have any questions at this point?
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, just a couple real quick. On 8.16.030, previously was based on a specific amount, and now it's not. So, it seems a little arbitrary, I'm just curious why it's not set. You know, previously was like a penalty or forget the exact verbiage, but it was set on three months, and now it's a little open-ended, which concerns me a little bit. And then, I'm curious if this is going to, in the future, is it going to carry over to each household? And are these green wastes being accounted for by volume and benefiting the city if we do better than other cities?
So, I want to go back to 030. You said something about three months first, Councilmember Vanderen?
Yeah. Yeah, I should open the page first, I apologize, but.
That's okay, I was just skimming it, but I didn't see any timeframe that.
0160.
Why you look that up? As far as the green waste and the volumes, yes. So, essentially, like I noted, it is a statewide target. So, some of the older, AB 939, for example, basically, every city and county had a target. And so, that's what's changed essentially with this new legislation, is now it's a statewide. So, there is a possibility, yes, that Galt may recycle more than its fair share of organics. Would we get credit for that? You know, not really, because it is a statewide goal. So, I would, I would speculate probably the larger, you know, metropolitan areas will likely, you know, be bearing the, you know, more than their fair share of the load, so to speak, because you have a lot of smaller, you know, rural and high altitude. You know, you heard about those couple of exemptions for smaller communities under 7,500 people or, or higher than 4,500 feet in elevation. All those folks are off the hook, basically. So, that means the rest of us are gonna have to make up for them. And so, I think that really, the smaller the, the agencies are, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna be relying on the bigger metropolitan areas to shoulder the, the, you know, the bulk of the, of the target, so.
Can I actually add a couple of things to that?
Sure, yeah, by all means, Mr. Carlson, thank you.
Thank you. Robert Carlson from Cal Recycle, thanks for having me at your meeting, and I appreciate all the work that you put into this revised ordinance. Just regarding some of the, the requirements for SB 1383, the requirements, as was mentioned, for the 50% reduction is a statewide requirement, not a requirement on the individual jurisdictions. The jurisdictions are required to implement programs. And so, to have the programs, to have the bins, to have the collection, those are the things that are required of the jurisdictions. There are requirements on facilities to ensure that the, the programs are being effective so that we will be measuring the amount of organics flowing through our transfer stations, recycling processing facilities, compost facilities, et cetera, so that we can identify whether these programs are being effective of removing these organic materials out of the waste stream, preventing them from making it into the landfill. The amount of material that is expected to be diverted, or is it's required to be diverted, it's, it's meant to be all of the divertible material, understanding that perfection is impossible. So, as we go through implementing these programs, we expect that all of the green waste, all of the food waste, all of the cardboard and paper is being diverted out of the disposal stream and into either a recycling stream or a compost or anaerobic digestion stream. And we have various metrics imposed on those facilities to make sure that they're operating in ways that are congruent with the way that the 1383 is, is set up. And then, there are the other aspects of 1383 that are not associated with solid waste that are, you know, work hand-in-hand. So, we do have the edible food recovery component of 1383 that is an effort to bring some more of that material out of the waste stream, edible food that would have otherwise been disposed of. There's the procurement requirement that is meant to build markets for the, the compost material and other energy products that are created from the diversion of the, from these organic materials out of the landfill. And so, it's a, it's a relatively large program that's meant to have aspects that are not just about providing service and getting the material out of the landfill, but finding homes for it, building markets, and ensuring that we meet our climate change goals.
Robert, could you possibly talk about the de minimis requirement that Cal Recycle is promoting around organics? So, the council can understand that for commercial businesses?
So, sure. The de minimis exemption is a jurisdiction-granted exemption. And this is sort of piggybacks on the previous de minimis exemptions that are being offered under 1826, which is the mandatory commercial organics recycling program, which has been in place, I think, since 2016. And, and the, the most recent de minimis level for that program was a half a cubic yard of organic waste. So, any, any commercial entity that generated more than two cubic yards of total solid waste, but less than a half a cubic yard of organic waste could qualify for a de minimis exemption. Under 1383, that de minimis exemption changes, and it's really based on the carts. So, if you have a green waste cart and a, and a sort of a blue recycling cart, and then your gray trash cart, the de minimis is based on each cart. So, and I'd have to check the reference, I believe it's 10 gallons per cart. So, if you are generating less than, say, 10 gallons of food waste in your green cart, then you don't have to have a program for that. But you would still have to have a program for your paper and your cardboard and the other organic materials in your blue bin, because that de minimis level is set separately from the green waste bin, if you have a three-cart system.
So, I just wanted the council to understand that the, the amount of organic waste generated by a commercial generator threshold has dramatically changed in the views of the state. And that's why we're updating the ordinance to account for that and to go after the customers that Robert just described, that the state is trying to get to.
Thanks for typing in on that, Rudy. I appreciate that, because I was curious of what was your, what was the point you're making by that question? Because I think it's important for the business owners that are out there watching this and that will hear about this, that they understand. Are they gonna be, because I think, you know, there's a lot of small businesses, and I know, I foresee this hitting like our supermarkets the hardest. You know, some of our larger restaurants, maybe, but a lot of our small mom-and-pa places, probably not so much. I mean, I'm trying to think of, they can, you know, if you have like a 30-gallon, I don't know what the common size is, but they say they have a 30-gallon trash, 30-gallon recycle and a 30-gallon green waste. Based on what you guys just said, I don't foresee like a small, a lot of small businesses falling under that. So, would they be exempt? I mean, would they be, be one of the ones that would be looking for exemptions? Or can somebody elaborate on that?
So, I, I can try a little bit. This might be something better suited for the, the haulers who understand the businesses and how they're set up, what they're currently doing. But as I mentioned earlier, this exemption is a jurisdiction-granted exemption. So, this would be an exemption request that the jurisdiction would have to receive and evaluate on a case-by-case basis to determine the eligibility of a particular business for this, for this particular exemption. I don't know how many small businesses or how small they are with their typical service is, 10 gallons? Is not a huge amount of material. Ten gallons of, of, say, food waste might be a lot for some small businesses. They may not be generating quite that much food waste, but certainly for things like cardboard or paper. A lot of small businesses are going to be generating at least ten gallons worth of printer paper or, you know, envelopes and that sort of thing.
And some of my comments, Sean, was maybe that while we have the bones of the ordinance in place with saying businesses shall recycle organics and shall participate in traditional recycling. And I'm sure Mike knows is we have a little work that we need to do after the ordinance is adopted on how physically the process will work of dropping those carts off at the businesses that are eligible to have that requirement. So that's what I wanted to, to let the council know that there is a little more work to do. But the ordinance change that we're doing today is going to allow us to do that.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding what you're saying, Rudy, with you, you say, you're saying that the way that the ordinance, and this, you know, and I want you to be frank with us, Rudy. From your perspective, do you think the verbiage, the, the verbiage of the ordinance, the way it's been presented to us tonight is going to allow that fine tuning between yourself and, and the city of Galt with, with Mr. Selling? That's going to allow that tweaking or you're, you're saying that we're a little premature and that there needs to be, I'm trying to understand what you were saying.
Okay, maybe I wasn't clear. I think that we, we have that wiggle room, I guess is what you call it is where we have the ability to, to craft the details of how we get to the end with the way the ordinance is written today.
Because it's written vague, because it's not real specific. Is that what you mean?
Well, it states, the ordinance states that the, the, if commercial businesses shall recycle organics. So that gives it the teeth, like if this, the code says that, then businesses need to comply.
Right. But it just, but the, the, the fine tuning that Rudy's referring to is, is the, the rolling out of the carts and how we're going to do that and, and the, the outreach and the timeline. I mean, there, there's a lot of things not specified in the ordinance, right?
A lot of those items are specified, are or will be specified in the franchise agreement. And, and so the ordinance provides the mandate and the details of exactly how the carts will roll out, the timing of the carts rolling out really depends on what Cal Waste can do and how we do that through the franchise agreement. So rather than put deadlines into the ordinance that we would then have to come back and amend, we add, we put in, we drafted the ordinance to allow the city and Cal Waste to sit down together, come up with standard, you know, come up with a time schedule, figure out exactly how they're going to do it. And all the while, the commercial operator, the commercial customers who Cal Waste services directly will, will have the legal mandate to comply. But the details of when they get the cart will be part of your franchise agreement administration.
I just want to be sure that, you know, last time this happened, you know, there was a lot of, I think there was, you know, mainly two parties involved, which was Cal Waste and the city. And the business owners were kind of left in the dark a bit. And so we saw the result of that. And I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Now I think that this is a three party discussion. This needs to be, you know, heavily proactive outreach so that nobody's surprised by this. And I know that, and I, I know that you guys did outreach last time, Rudy, but I think there was a, some discrepancies with when it was the timing of it or whatever. And I'm not going to point any fingers on anybody responsible. It was just, it was messy. The whole thing was a mess. You know, and the fallout from it was a mess. And so I just don't want to be, I, I shouldn't heck don't want, I know any council member is sitting on this council right now wants to be involved in something that even resembles something like that again. So I want to make sure this goes off cleanly. I think that's the best of all of us. So for me, I just want to make sure before I consider an ordinance tonight, I want to make sure that we have representative from Cal Waste saying, yes, I think it's worded properly and we could work with it. I have Mr. Snyder and Mr. Carlson and whoever else is present here, Ms. Furch, they're all saying, yes, I think this is a, this is a good thing going forward. I'm, I'm, I'm more interested in what everybody says together than what just, and no offense, Mr. Selling, but I, you know, I'm less interested about what just the city of Galt says. This is a good, I want to hear everybody say that they agree with that. Go, Mr. Lozano, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, 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 might be a little slow here tonight. So help me understand. This is an ordinance that was last changed how long ago? Did, did we last?
Almost fourteen years ago.
Okay. So this is ju, what we're doing, what we're approving tonight is the, the ordinance that complies now with state law, the new state law.
Yeah, you're not really approving it tonight. This would just be the introduction.
Right, right.
Yes, but yeah, so this is, gets us current with state law. This is, think of this as like the framework, if you will. And then like Rudy was saying, you know, we'll have to work through the details. So, yeah, when, when the mayor used the term vague, yeah, it wouldn't be my first choice, but yes, yes. So this, this basically, like I said, it's the framework. It doesn't get down to the, you know, the fine details. As, as Ms. Steiner noted, you know, those details are largely, you know, enumerated in the franchise agreement. So.
Okay, so.
Oh, okay.
And I get the, the idea and, and I appreciate everyone's input and everyone being here tonight to say that we can work with this ordinance. But we, we, there is already a signed franchise agreement in place. Is that going to be coming back to us for revision because of the new laws?
No, we don't anticipate that at this point.
Okay, so that's already in place. So help me understand this. And, and, and again, I, I, I come from just a, a quite honestly ignorance. And so I just need to understand, what are we working on then?
So this is the ordinance, basically like I was indicating, best term I can come up with is the framework. So these, I mean, like if you, you know, if you were to go through it, there's a bunch of definitions. A lot of stuff, you know, has fallen by the wayside, terms that aren't used anymore. Things like that. And then it's, it's also reflecting these mandates as far as what these new thresholds are for, you know, not just our overall goal, which was, you know, AB nine thirty nine and then AB three forty one. Which just meant everything you generated, you had to have fifty or then three forty one, jumped it to seventy five percent, had to be diverted. Meaning, you know, reused, recycled, you know, repurposed kind of thing, could not be landfilled. Then you add eighteen twenty six, which basically focused in on the organics, not the overall waste stream, the integrated waste stream. And now we, you know, the latest is thirteen eighty three, which goes a step further on the organics. So there's, there's little things in that legislation that, you know, back in two thousand and seven, like I think the earliest legislation we're talking about was two thousand and eleven. So that came four years after we last updated it. So this is really a catch up to reflect that legislation. And we've raised the framework so that we can then use the franchise agreement relating it to that framework essentially. Maybe, maybe an examples in order where I would say, okay, you know, business X, we have these new state mandates. Well, I'm not so new state mandate, but anyway, we have these same mandates. We revise our ordinance that basically that's the teeth, I think, that Rudy used that term earlier. That's the teeth basically from the city standpoint to say, you know, business X, you need to comply with these requirements. And here's how we're going to get you in compliance. What carts you may need, we'll, we'll get what your waste generation is, you know, if it's organic, do you qualify for a de minimis maybe? You know, do you have space requirements, space issues? We'll be looking at things like that to make sure that, you know, we give everybody, you know, at least a very, you know, one on one, so to speak, look at, you know, what they're, what they need to do to be compliant. So.
Okay. And so I, I, I get the ordinance part and then I get the franchise agreement part. The, the piece that we still, that the mayor was talking about that we don't want, that we want to make sure we get right are pieces in the franchise agreement where there's some local room to work together to make sure our businesses are taken care of.
Yeah, I would say the wiggle room is really going to be in the ordinance is how we implement this. The franchise agreement is pretty specific. So not a lot of wiggle room there, I would say. I don't know. I would, you know, Rudy may have some other comments.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mike. I think it's pretty straightforward in the franchise agreement as to the services we can provide and the rates that we can do them at. But now it would be, you know, the way Mike's craft, the, or way the county or city staff is craft of the ordinance kind of allows for that way to come in where, okay, do you want the accounting offices in town to be mandated to have organics collection or is it the grocery stores? And that's sort of where Mike needs to coordinate with Cal Recycle and to see if they're accomplishing the goals that Cal Recycle set out and the requirements. And at that point, Cal, or Cal Waste would, would then go in and tell the accounting agency or the accounting business that at that point, the city has determined that you have five people on staff here. So you would need organics requirements because five people in the lunchroom creates over ten gallons of organic waste or not. And so that, those are the details that we just need to mesh out with the city. It's not, it's not the grocery stores. It's not the restaurants. It's not the, the, the gas stations. It's the accounting firms. It's the dentist office. It's the, what do those requirements look like to get to the goal of the state?
Okay, I got it. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And, and I would agree that that rollout needs to be very deliberate and collaborative so that we are all on the same page. And I appreciate you all being here tonight to pitch in your, your, your two cents. And, and I appreciate the clarification. Excuse me. It's been a long, long day for me. So it's getting late. So I, I, I appreciate you taking the extra couple minutes.
I would have to say, I told Todd I'd say this, but next time, put the garbage man on before the accountants and the developers because we go to work at three in the morning. So our, our heads are spinning too.
Councilmember Vandenberg, you have a question?
Yeah, just real quick. This is an ordinance so that everybody complies with further division of waste, not necessarily new charges. Are these grocery stores, for example, will be a likely target? Are they going to be charged a, a new rate for a new service or this is an existing service, just more division?
I would anticipate it will depend. And I would say largely there probably will be some additional charge, yes. Because if you can imagine your waste stream, you know, pick a number, let's just say ten, you generate, you know, ten, ten pounds. And of that ten pounds, six of it is organic and the other four is inorganic. So the way it's currently being sorted, the organics are not being pulled out. Okay? So those, those are being put into the trash or, or, you know, well, I guess they're basically being put in the trash or the green waste, depending on if it's, you know, food or, or actual green waste. And then the other part is the recycling. Now you're basically going to have to pull those organics out and have them recycled. So what that charge may be, there may be some offsetting. You may be able to downsize your garbage container because now you have to separate that organic material into an organic container. So, but, but I would say largely there's going to be some additional charge would be my guess in most cases. Rudy, you have any thoughts on that or?
So the, the city of Galt has, you know, about roughly a hundred and eighty to about two hundred commercial customers. And I, I would say that for about seventy percent of your commercial customers, this is an added service that they're probably, that they're probably going to have to have based on the waiver process that we establish with the city. So it, this, this really isn't adding a cost to the grocery stores and the restaurants because they participate in these programs already. And the grocery stores kind of were one up on us and they had a, they had their own food waste programs to where when their purveyor comes and drops food off, they're taking some old food away. But we're talking about adding a service to about sixty percent of the commercial customers in the city of Galt. And this is a required service based on the ordinance that you're about to pass.
And just to add one thing.
Needs to understand that.
And just to add one thing, this is, you know, when we went through the, the new contract, this was anticipated. You know, we knew this legislation was coming. So there are organic services already being provided. There are rates that are already in the franchise agreement.
And they were negotiated by your staff and consultant at, at that time. And I have the rates here if you guys would like to hear those rates as well.
Right. So basically like what Councilor Vandenberg, what Mike, Mike was selling, I mean, Mike, Mike was like, what Mike Selling was saying is, you know, it, it depends if a, if a particular business is able to cost average, like, well, if I'm going to have to divert more waste from garbage to organics, then I can downsize this car in order to afford the additional organics cart that I didn't have before. Because I was, you know, I'm, I'm an office supply store. And, you know, grocery stores and those businesses, like Rudy said, they already have these programs in place because they're the biggest producers of organic. But he's talking about the businesses that not normally think about that kind of stuff. And now they're being asked to divert. And so it depends, are they already using the smallest carts? So there's really no downsizing of the garbage to get that? Or are they going to be able to go from like a, a, a big, you know, a three yard dumpster or something and downsize into carts? So they can afford the organic. So again, nobody really knows. It depends on, right? I mean, it's just.
Right. Basically, what I'm understanding is from a business perspective, a business owner will be charged more money for the same garbage because it's divided in three instead of two. And I would hear those rates.
I think that's going to be the case in the bulk of, of the, of the businesses. I think, you know, Rudy was saying sixty to seventy percent. So, yeah, but I, but to answer your question, yes.
Yeah, that's not going to go over well.
Yeah, it's not, this cart, this additional organic cart's not free. There, there's no additional anything that's going to be added that's free. If you, that's, if that answers your question straight on.
Yes. So your, the, each business does have a ninety six gallon recycling cart included with their commercial trash service, but this addition of the organic cart is not free, as Sean said. It is an added service. The minimum service level we have is a, just below eighty seven dollars per month for a sixty four gallon organics cart service. If they wanted a one yard cart, it's around a hundred and twenty dollars per month. So this is an added cost and Mr. Vanderberg kind of hit the nail on the head that when you take a, you know, sixty four gallons of organics out of your trash cart, you don't necessarily take a whole yard out of your trash cart. So you don't go from a two yarder to a one yarder because you took the sixty four gallons of organics out of your trash cart. So this can be perceived as a additional service above their current service levels that they're going to have to have if this ordinance is passed.
And what is the absolute deadline for us, Mr. Selling, on having this ordinance in place?
So the, the deadline to, you know, for thirteen eighty three is January first of two thousand and twenty two. And obviously you don't flip a light switch and all of a sudden you're compliant. So the sooner we do it, the more time we have to, you know, educate businesses and, and go through it and have the time to do these, you know, one on one, so to speak, and, and look at their, you know, look at their waste stream and, and try to find the best, you know, lowest cost, if you will, option for them. I mean, it might be something like, you know, as Rudy was just saying, you know, if, if you get a one yarder and maybe there's, you know, a strip mall or a few businesses together, might be able to go in on, on one cart kind of thing and have, you know, and then split the cost that way versus having individual service, even at a smaller size, you know, if there may be some scale of economy, I guess, in, in some cases like that. But to answer your question, the sooner the better really is what it comes down to. So.
So you essentially say the, the ordinance were required to have this in place basically a little less than a year from now. Let's just call it a year.
Correct.
Well, ten months. So, but what, what's, I, I think the more important question is what's the city's? what what's I I think the more important question is, what's the city's policy going to be in enforcement? Because what I'm hearing, I can hear business owners saying to me right now is, well, if we didn't have to start, you know, coming down on businesses for for, you know, compliance until January twenty twenty-two, then why are we coming up with the ordinance right now?
So, yeah, sorry.
Later or? Go ahead.
Oh, so basically, what the other the other piece of this is, and the state recognizing that, you know, you don't flip the switch and and all of a sudden you're compliant. So we were supposed to be compliant, you know, as of January twenty twenty. So and then basically, we've got a two-year grace period before the enforcement kicks in. We have submitted an informal plan to the state at their request to demonstrate, you know, a a incremental, if you will, timeframe to reach that compliance. And so I don't know if, you know, Jill or Robert may have want to make some comments as to, you know, what that looks like if we do want to wait till the last minute, so to speak. And, you know, and what what the city might face, you know, in that case, or what the process may be.
Yeah, I I can certainly add a little bit of clarity. I I think it's important as we talk about this to keep some of our programs somewhat separate because we have three or four really significant statutes that we're talking about. The the most important ones to this conversation right now is thirteen eighty-three, which is the Short-lived Climate Pollutant Act, which is what is going to be driving a lot of this new organics diversion programs and has all these other aspects to it that I mentioned earlier, edible food, the procurement, et cetera. And that has a an implementation date of January first, twenty twenty-two. What Director Selling was discussing a moment ago about the informal plan and that had a previous implementation date, that was for eighteen twenty-six or the mandatory commercial organics recycling program and for three forty-one, the mandatory commercial recycling program. Those, while they they have some overlap in the kinds of programs that they are meant to implement, that they are separate laws, they have different implementation dates and different requirements. So we are working with the city to make sure that the three forty-one and eighteen twenty-six programs are being implemented. And we've extended some of the implementation dates in order to make sure that you have time to to develop those programs. But for thirteen eighty-three, it's a separate process and that is gearing up to be implemented at January first, twenty twenty-two.
January one, Sean, next year.
Vice Mayor Sanders, you had a comment?
Yes, I have a few comment of Mr. Selling, this ordinance, you said, we just have only framework. If we prove tonight, then you and the staff and the colleagues have to work each other, not the council, right? Because this.
Go ahead.
Right, and and my next question is, when it's going it is going to implement at this point, it's going to implement on January twenty twenty-two, right?
Correct.
And my concern is, we does not want it happen, it's same thing, we are the first city to start something. And the other city, did you have, what about the other city, they're gonna start on a January twenty-two or I I believe at this time, nobody know, might we stay, can give some kind of grace? We don't know the other city can start on January first, that's my big concern at this time. And the other thing, I like to bring the ordinance, have a little bit more tea, this is just a framework. If you work with the colleagues and bring something a little bit more specific in that ordinance, then we willing to take the action.
Right, there are a couple of questions in there, I'll try to, I I mean, I recall them all, but but basically, the first one, as far as the framework goes, and and you know, you want any more detail, what I can tell you is, we worked on developing this, you know, Cal Recycle themselves, put out templates for for agencies to update their ordinances. And and I can tell you that several other agencies are ahead of us already. I mean, yeah, some are behind us. But there are several others that are already ahead of us. So we're somewhere, I would say, in the middle of the pack as far as that goes. As far as adding more detail to it, you know, we worked with BBK and their solid waste expert attorneys. You know, Ms. Hood and and Ms. Steiner may be able to speak to that to some degree. But essentially, when you craft an ordinance, is you want to build in some flexibility. You know, I mean, I know the term vagueness has been used tonight, but you want you want some flexibility because as Ms. Steiner noted, if you put in specifics as far as dates or certain numbers and those change or the laws change, now you've got to go back and update it. So you want to have some, you know, flexibility or vagueness built in to allow you some latitude to implement it. So you're not updating it constantly in order to keep up with things. What, you know, I already forgot what what your second question was, you repeat it?
My second question was, we does not, I I'm talking about hypothetically, if we prove that ordinance tonight and you, like in department and colleagues can work as a good faith, we does not want to start the implementation before anybody, we don't want to be the first city because that's why we have a backlash is last time. I know my job is different than staff because I have to give the answer to my constituents. Why we put the first one to have a rate and create, why we have the first one to?
Yeah, so to that, I would say, as as Mr. Carlson noted, thirteen eighty-three is, and I apologize for the confusion, it all does kind of start to run together, but as as January first is the is the enforcement date for thirteen eighty-three, the last thing I would think, you know, any business wants to hear is for us to come up and say, guess what, you know, next next week or next month, if we wait till the last minute, you're going to need to, you know, comply with this mandate and and, you know, retain this service. And, you know, they haven't they haven't had a chance to budget for it or whatnot. So I think, you know, us getting out early, working with them to see, you know, what their waste stream is and how they can, you know, best minimize their costs, you know, if they have opportunities, like I said, to work with, you know, other adjacent businesses or whatnot to get a scale of economy, those kinds of things, it gives them time to do that. So yes, they may not necessarily need to be compliant or start the service, you know, months ahead, so to speak. But at least that we've talked with them and worked through with them, what, you know, how they're going to comply come January first.
And I think I might have brought a little confusion to this that I'm sure Robert was just about to say as he got off mute. But so the the threshold levels actually dropped in January of twenty twenty-one from four cubic yards of total service down to or to four cubic yards. But it's starting in in January one of twenty twenty-two when it drops to two cubic yards of total service. So so the the threshold actually changed January first of this year, and then it changes again January first of next year to pretty much go from getting the high volume generators to getting the accounting agencies and the dentist's office. So it's not that the threshold has not changed, it's that it's changing more dramatically at the start of January one, twenty twenty-one.
I think I think what the vice mayor is driving at here is that it's one thing to talk about getting this ordinance in because we have a deadline to get something in place and that takes time. But I think what, and and hopefully, this is where he was going with his one question is, I think my concern is, it's one thing to talk about getting this in place, the framework, and then sitting down with Cal Waste and hashing out the details and how we're going to roll this out to the public and and the timeline, okay, this is how we're going to start outreach and we're going to go to each business and we're going to educate them on this and that and so forth, if we haven't already started doing that or whatever. But when does actual enforcement really start? Yeah, we don't want to show up on December thirtieth and be like, hey, next week, you know, you're going to start getting a, you know, a, you know, a citation if you're not compliant. But I can tell you that businesses are not going to start wanting to pay for an extra service any sooner than they have to. So it's one thing to go out and and do that and and brace them or brief them on it. But when is the city of Galt, when is this ordinance actually going to start being in effect or or if it goes into effect, when are we actually going to start enforcing it? That's my question.
The way that thirteen eighty-three enforcement works and and I'll defer to others of if, you know, if I misspeak. But my understanding is that the basically Cal Recycle will be, it becomes enforceable from the state level to the agency, city or county level, January first of twenty-two. And twenty, January of twenty-four, January first of twenty-four is when it shifts from the state to the local agency level to the local agency to the specific business level. So again, this is a statewide target. And so what Cal Recycle wants to see is that local agencies have got their programs in place and getting their, you know, their businesses to comply so that, you know, we they're they're basically looking at us as to, okay, are you guys meeting, you know, the the programs that thirteen eighty-three is put in place in order for the state to reach their goal? And if we're not, then we would go into an enforcement process with Cal Recycle. And and I would look to Robert or or Jill if if they want to articulate what that looks like.
But so the answer, what I'm hearing is, January of twenty twenty-two is when the city of Galt would really start, you know? I mean, I I just, because I struggle with like, if we were passing an ordinance tonight that says you couldn't walk your dog on a Tuesday, then, you know, next week, somebody could get cited for walking their dog on a Tuesday. I'm just wondering if we're putting an ordinance in place, when is it really starting? Or is this just the framework, we're just working towards an ordinance, or are we actually putting it in place? I'm struggling with that, that's what I'm.
No, yeah, the 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 ordinance is a framework, it's vague, I I hate that word, but anyway, that's what we're using tonight. It's vague by definition to give you that flexibility. So the ordinance is the framework. And the the applicability or the enforcement point is January twenty-two. So you, if in your example, mayor, if you pass this, you know, well, you're not really passing it tonight, there's a second reading at the next council meeting. That's when it would essentially be passed and thirty days thereafter is my understanding is when it would take effect. But the enforcement wouldn't start until January of twenty-two. So it's really looking at, you know, the end of the year for enforcement. The rest of that time in between is like we've said, is that's for us to go out, do the outreach, make people aware so they can start planning. Not necessarily necessarily saying they got to start the service immediately. For some, it may be beneficial to if they generate a large amount of organic waste. For others, not so much, and they'll probably want to wait.
In in part of that outreach, Rudy, maybe you can answer this, because I I feel like you're going to be a big part of that, we would hope. I I think you are right. Yeah, so are you going to pretty much be able to identify, you think, early on, like, when you come to a business and you are saying, you know what? I think you guys are going to be a good candidate for probably a waiver, and this is that process. Is that something you think you guys will be able to identify early on and and that there will be businesses that will candidates for that? And and is it a difficult process, or do you think it's just a bunch of hoops that'll never be able to be?
It is most definitely a difficult process. And I would actually kind of push that question to to Mike and and to Robert as well. We're kind of going through this in Sacramento County right now. They're going through an exemption process and, you know, they didn't update their code before their exemption process. So they're kind of regretting that right now. But I I don't know the answer to that. I'm probably not the guy that's going to answer that. I think the city and the state, Mike.
Mr. Carlson, could you answer that question?
Yeah, I I can provide some some information. As I mentioned earlier, the 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 two major exemptions, the de minimis exemption and the space waiver are are jurisdiction granted. And so the jurisdiction needs to come up with a procedure for evaluating an exemption request and for granting them. There are, there is sort of a a framework of how that's meant to go about in the regulations and what those standards are. Just briefly, it it's meant to be, I mean, it's meant to be a little bit hard, right? I mean, these these this law was passed to get this organics out of the waste stream, to have this service provided so that that material is diverted away from landfills. So we want that material to come out. So we don't want it to be something that's that's super easy. But we but but the the waivers are there for a reason. And so to the extent that there's a an established procedure and process in place and there's a an ability for somebody, whether it be somebody at the city or the hall or to evaluate individual businesses, I think that's the way it's going to go. Cal Recycle really is not involved in creating the process, will eventually evaluate whether your processes might be, you know, adequate or not if it comes to that kind of an evaluation or compliance investigation. But generally speaking, it's up to the jurisdiction to determine what that process is and make sure that those exemptions are being granted within the confines of the the regulations.
But the waiver.
So I think what he's saying, Sean, is like, if you meet your diversion goals, we're all good. And I truly think that like the framework that Mike's laid out with this ordinance change allows us to do that with the city if we put the the time in to to play it out. And, you know, that's where I'll sit.
Does any other council member want to make a comment?
Yeah, I I do. I just want to go back to the the charges. You mentioned eighty-four and a hundred and twenty, those are like eighty-four, I believe it was eighty-four. That was a minimum for a bin and then a hundred and twenty for a one yard cube. Those charges are.
Actually, eight eighty-seven fifty-four for a one-time-a-week service for a sixty-four gallon cart. And it's one one time a week and it is a one hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-six cents for a one cubic yard container, one time a week for organic service.
Say that last value, one sixty-seven?
One one hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-six cents.
That's the monthly rate, the once per week is how many times it's serviced.
Yes, I.
Okay, great clarification, because.
I saw you doing the math, so.
Okay, thank you. That's because that's a huge difference. I mean, you know, that's twenty bucks a week as opposed to eighty-seven dollars a week, so that's.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
Okay, that's what we're here for. So really, getting this out to businesses is important early. And then those values in the franchise agreement were agreed upon years ago, correct? These are not changeable values. And these are state mandates, which, you know, don't make me very keen on what it's doing for businesses, but it's just a matter of mechanics at this point, whether we whether we like it or not.
Yeah, and Mr. Vanderburg, I could also tell you that the same organics rate right outside of the city limits with us at Cal Waste for a sixty-four gallon cart is a hundred and fifty dollars. So you guys have a a good rate because the city negotiated a good organics rate at the time that we did this contract revision. And we saw that coming down the pipe. So staff consultants, council at the time, you guys have a great organics rate compared to other communities.
I can appreciate that, but this local businesses aren't going to check the the competitive rates, they're just going to be certain, like you, concerned about the bottom line. So that's that's okay.
I know, I get the phone calls.
I would be the happiest man in the world, Rudy, if that comment did it did it for me right now, but.
I know.
I'm sorry. No, do we have any, do we have any written public comment on on this matter, Tina?
No written comment.
And Rose, do we have any hands raised online?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay, so just to, Mike, so tonight, we're doing the, we're just introducing the first reading of this, is that what we're voting on?
Yeah, Harry may want to articulate that.
So so this would be first reading or introduction of the ordinance. It will come back to you at your next council meeting for approval. And then it would go, then the ordinance itself would become effective thirty days thereafter. But the different parts of the ordinance will become effective as they're implemented, right? So some of it is already in effect, some of it will be, will happen when people get carts. So there will be, and then the actual state enforcement on the organics portion will start next January first. Right, so so the idea was to bring you the ordinance now so you could look at it, hopefully introduce it. Then at your next meeting, adopt it, then and then at that point, staff will start, together with Cal Waste, would start doing. Then at your next meeting, adopt it, then and then at that point, staff will start, together with Cal Waste, would start doing. Even more outreach and and as I said, most of the provisions in the ordinance are already in effect. They're just top cleanup from what's, you know, from the last fourteen years. And the new organics implementation will be, you know, first outreach, then a timeline. Then getting the carts out and then enforcement will actually start into, by the state, until January first.
How do how do we as the city council know that? The city of Galt and Cal Waste are gonna, because obviously we already have a, our contracts already in place. And once we make this ordinance, that's that's gonna be, you know, pretty much, well, the framework. Uh but how do we, I mean, how are we, where's the where's the assurances that we're gonna be getting that the two of you are gonna be able to come to an agreement? That you both agree on how we're gonna roll this out, who's gonna be in charge of the outreach and so on and so forth. I mean, we're just basically taking that on blind faith right now, right?
Oh, I I think Mike maybe should should address that first. As to what the city thinks that, yeah, how the city plans on doing the outreach and going forward. And then remember that under your current franchise, um Cal Waste. Uh has, you know, he, they they deal directly with the commercial customers. The city does not. I understand there's. That doesn't mean that the city won't, that they won't explain to you. I just, you know, I just just remember what your or what your franchise says.
No, yeah, and and maybe just just back up a second here. As Mister Carlson noted earlier, there's, you know, there's a couple of different. Bills, legislation in here that were, you know, that were trying to meet some which are already in effect. So we would meet, sit down with Cal Waste and go through the customer list as to which customers are now applicable because of that two yard. You know, requirement and then, you know, look at which other customers were are probably gonna come online for the organics. And then we're gonna have to go out and and meet with them and go over, you know, what their situation is explained to it. Which mandates, you know, they need to comply with now or which they may, you know, also be, may may, you know. Some of the same, the businesses may be hit by, you know, more than one of these mandates, so. But we'll have to sit down, go through their customer list with them, identify which ones are meeting which one mandates, the ones now. And then the ones in January that take effect enforcement in January twenty two for thirteen eighty three. And go out and outreach with those folks, explain to them, you know, what these mandates are requiring. And try to work with them to identify how they're going to get compliant service. And yet, at the same time, try to minimize, you know, the cost impact, so.
What I would like to see would be some kind of timeframe on an update that comes back to the council and certain. Where you report back, letting us know how your discussions with Cal Waste, you guys have hashed out the details, so on and so forth. Outreach so far and that way, you know, and and even maybe going beyond that, you know, maybe we could even, you know, ask like the chamber. I know that, you know, the chamber was obviously very unhappy about the garbage contract and all that. But I think that the, you know, the chamber would be instrumental in trying to facilitate, you know, some outreach as well. So maybe the city could like, you know, reach out to them and ask them to be helpful in that manner. But I I think we need to be updated on this as we go forward and where we're at with things. That's just one thought, I don't know how the council feels. I don't know if we have to like make it exact, I mean, maybe just a consensus that we'd like to see that and maybe Mike, you can say, no problem, we we can do that, or I don't know. And I think we've talked a lot, I just think we're all kind of really timid on moving forward.
We can definitely do it, I wouldn't, sorry, go ahead.
Mister Mayor, we'll come back to you with a status report on this conversation.
So does any council member have any further questions before we entertain a motion here? Are we? Is anybody uncomfortable with? You know, questions that haven't been answered or any specific part of this? I mean, obviously, it's framework, so there's a lot of work to be done. But I I think, I get, I get, I think we all kind of understand it, I think.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, may make a comment. You know, I I'm talking about, we all know this is a mandate and this can be a business. I believe they all understand this can be a little bit more expense on their pocket. The the only thing my concern is, and I don't have a problem to, you know. To prove this ordinance tonight, but I just wanna make sure all parties can work as a good faith. And I don't wanna be start something and then have to, you know, go back on that thing. So if the all parties agree to work a good faith, and we all know that. And we don't, I don't have a problem to start, you know, to start the framework or that. But we still have eight month, you know, to implement. But I don't know, it can be possible if we reach out to the customer before we start the framework. I I don't know, it not have enough time or we cannot reach to all the business. What ca- what is going to happen before we start that ordinance?
Well, I think I think what, Mister Vice Mayor, I think what's been explained to us is, it doesn't, it's not really matter if the framework is is put into place, you know. Eventually, like, you know, in thirty, let's just say it's forty days from now when it goes into effect, or if it's in November. The real enforcement, the real, you know, I think it's just, we're just getting that out of the way. I think, you know, we don't wanna procrastinate too long. I think if I'm understanding whatever he's been saying is, let's just get this done in place. Show that we're getting an an ordinance in place. Doesn't mean that we're gonna go start citing people, you know, until the the time comes when we have to do that. That's what I've gotten from the conversation tonight and the education process basically begins now until, you know, which time the the ordinance. You know, really starts to have to come with consequences, I think.
It's it's almost like, if if you guys kind of take this. We do the first reading tonight and you adopt the ordinance and it becomes official, then I can start reaching out to businesses and give them a specific. Message of what's gonna happen, you know. Do it, can I give them the timeline? Not exactly, but I can give them the message and then we can dictate the timeline. And you can kind of, if we approve or move forward with this, then. We can start working with the businesses to inform them, but until this is adopted. I have, it's hard to even communicate with the businesses because there's no specific. Uh adoption in place.
So Mister Mayor, as I said earlier, we will work closely with Cal Waste to make sure that we're keeping up the things that we have. Uh committed to doing to you, committed to doing as far as rolling this information out to the customers. We're also committed to ensuring that Cal Waste also ad- adheres to their end of the bargain as well. And so and so Cal Recycle will be there to also make sure that we're adhering to their policies. So we will be happy to report back to council probably in about three months or three or four months and let you know how we're doing. We will be reaching out to the customers where it's appropriate to make sure that they are aware of what's coming down the pike. So I think we're good.
Councilmember Lozano, you were, you know, one of the three of us that basically, you know, jumped into a huge fire when we came onto council. On the heels of the 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 waste contract. Are you understanding this the way I'm hearing it too, based on the comments you've seen from Paul and I? What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm good. Yeah, I I've been good for a while. I I think that we have some very capable staff and I think there were lessons learned before. I I have no doubt that Mister Heinz will ensure that there's a collaborative effort to get out to the business in an aggressive, deliberate manner. Uh I'm ready to, ready to hear the second reading next, next meeting.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna make sure that. All right, well, if we don't have any other comments by council, then at this point, I guess I will entertain a motion if someone would like to make one. To introduce, read by title only and wave further for the reading of the ordinance amending chapter eight point. Eight point one six of the Galt municipal code regarding solid waste collection. So moved. Moved by Councilmember Lozano. Seconded. Seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
No.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
No.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes three to two. Moving on to our next item. I is item, I, sorry, my, I don't have my glasses, I can't see. Item I communication, do we have any communication this evening? But oh, before I go, thank you, Rudy, Mister Vakariza, thank you, Ms. Furch, Mister Carlson and. Mister Snyder for being here tonight. And sorry you had to wait so long and go through a long discussion on this, but it was important you were here. Thank you.
Thank you, good.
Thanks. All right, sorry, moving on to item I communication. Do we have any communication tonight, Miss Hubert?
Uh, no communication.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item J, City Clerk's Report.
Nothing.
Item K. Comments by staff.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, Lorenzo Heinz, City Manager. I wanted to inform council that I signed an MOU with Sacramento County last week. This MOU allows the county to pu- to provide wifi service in four of our parks here in Galt. The county is rolling out a program to provide wifi in parks to help those folks who don't have access to internet. In their own homes and given that we've got kids out here that are distance learning. And and just given the overall stress that we're all dealing with, the county is rolling out this plan. And essentially, they are providing the equipment and paying for the service for one year. If the city desires to keep this service going, then we will have to take that additional expense on. It is just under ten thousand dollars a year, based on our estimates. So we felt it was a good service to provide to the citizens of Galt. At least for this year, and then at the end of this year, we'll reassess as to whether the city wants to take it on as a permanent expenditure. The parks that are in play right now with this service are Galt Community Park, Walker Community Park, Galt. The Galt Sports Complex and the Meadowview Park. And I wanted to let council know that we are collaborating with the county on this particular project. So I'm 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 happy to let the citizens know that we're doing this and when we finally get it set up. We'll make sure that the council and citizens know that we'll have wifi available in those parks. And that's all for me. I will go around the the room here and let's start with Human Resources Director. Stephanie Van Stey.
Good evening. I have no updates tonight. Thank you.
All right, how about our Community Development Director, Craig Hoffman?
Uh, nothing further, thank you.
All righty, our Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez.
Oh, nothing more to add.
A police chief, Brian Kalanowski.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
All righty, Parks and Rec Director, Armando Solis. And as usual, Armando is very quiet. Let's move on to City Attorney, Kimberly or Harriet, how do you wanna play it?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
All righty. Our City Clerk, Tina Hubert?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
All right, Armando texted me and indicated that the battery and and one of his devices is failing, so that's why he didn't respond. So I don't think he has anything to report. Rose Rodacker?
I have nothing, I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, and 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 Finance Director, Claire Tyson.
The only thing I wanted to mention is that we have a new accounting manager. Her name is Cindy Nguyen. She started yesterday. That's all I have to record.
All right, Public Works Director, Mike Selling?
Yeah, I'll just make a plea for anybody out there who may be interested in being analyst for the city. And for public work specifically, you can help me on all this upcoming work we've got on the solid waste efforts. So, yeah, on that, that's all I've got, thanks.
All right, thanks, thanks. That sounds like fun. I'd do it, but I I can't hold two jobs. Mister Mayor, that concludes staff comments and back to you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we'll now move on to comments by City Council Members, Future Agenda Items. Start with our Vice Mayor, Mister Sandu.
Uh, first of all, I would like to thank you, all the staff are giving me all the good report for for the council. Working hard during COVID nineteen and now we are in a purple tier and I hoping we are in a red tier. And the same thing, I ask the city manager, when we can go in a red, red tier. See if we be able to open the city offices. A lot of cities and they are out there, they want it to be open. Thank you. I know it's really tonight, save everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papinow? I don't have anything to add. Thank you all. All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Uh, congratulations, Cindy. Uh, I wanted to thank staff for the report that it was, you know, substantial, but it was good. Thank you for making the file warrants darker ink. I appreciate it. They're actually fairly easy to read this time. And thank you for removing the non credit card users from the list. Glad not to see my name on there. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lozano?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you, sir. Well, I just wanna say again, thank you for the the, all the hard work on the financial report. Obviously, I don't envy the work and I know that some of us are really hard on some of you this evening, but this is the city's money. It's very important and sorry for the, you know, almost six hour meeting here or five hour meeting. But when you talk about the city's money and you talk about waste, that is accommodation for a long meeting, just warning you for the future, Mister Heinz. So I just wanna say one thing to Call PD, thank you for your 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 work with capturing or capturing. Arresting the the Cadillac converter thieves and thank you for the community for for being vigilant and being a big piece of that. I'd love to see the community and the please, please come together to solve stuff like that. And just real quick to Armando and his staff are doing a good job with Parks and Rec with the landscaping. It, I'm really happy so far. So with that, I will wrap it up and wish everybody a good late evening. And be safe out there and thank you for watching. Good night.